Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for today, April 9th, 2019. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. At this time, we're going to do roll call. All council members are present. I'm going to go ahead and introduce the city council members and staff. So down off the dais to the far left is our city attorney, Bill McClure. To his immediate right is our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. To the far left on the dais is council member Catherine Carlton. To my immediate left is Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor. To my right is council member Betsy Nash. To her right is council member Drew Combs. And then down off the dais is our city clerk Judy Heron. If you want to speak this evening with respect to any of the items on the agenda, please fill out a comment card in the back of the room and bring them to our city clerk so she can go ahead and we know that you want to talk. At this time, if everyone could go ahead and please stand and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have an announcement. Our next meeting on April 6th is going to be held at the Menlo Park Senior Citizen Center. I'm sorry, April 16th, at the Menlo Park Senior Citizen Center at 100 Terminal Avenue. And so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and come down off the dais for our presentations and proclamations. So at the start of city council meetings, we've made it a habit to go ahead and honor people in the community. Sometimes we honor people who have contributed in charitable work. Sometimes we honor people who are retiring from long years of service. And sometimes we honor achievements of community members who have gone out and worked hard and done something really outstanding, and that's what we get to do this evening. Ladies, if you could join me and Coach Pay. So we, this evening, get to honor the Menlo School Girls Basketball Championship. And so earlier this year, the girls and Coach Pay brought home the state high school championship for the Division II. If we can give them a round of applause. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and invite Coach Pay up to go ahead and talk about the dedication of the team and what that meant.
Well, thank you very much. I want to first say that I play basketball with Ray every Sunday, or it was every Saturday at St. Raymond's, and he has a real wicked left-hand low-post game. So I appreciate the honor here. I know it was a terrific season for our Menlo Girls Basketball Team. We're a very young team, and it was just exciting. It was something, I think the neatest thing in sports is when you accomplish something that wasn't expected. So they ran the table at the end of the season, won five consecutive games, and won the state championship at the Golden One Center in Sacramento. And they are just excited as punch. So thank you very much for honoring us.
And I just wanted to say to all of you, I don't know if you get to hear these things, but as mayor of the city, I get to hear them, and the community was really excited about your championship. People, I think you've probably seen things in the paper, in the back of paper, but people have talked about you far and right about what you guys accomplished this year. So congratulations very much on that. You're welcome. So we have some certificates for you all. So I'm just going to go ahead and read your name, and if you guys could go up and take the certificate real quick and go through them. So our first certificate is for Sharon Nahad. Maya McConie. She's absent. All right. All right. Marissa Lee. She's absent. Coco Layton. Absent. All right, they work hard at Menlo School. Avery Lee. All right, and so did everyone get one? Did we miss anyone? No, great. Okay, so what I'd like to do now, if you guys could all back up, we're going to go ahead and bring our council down and take a picture with you all to go and remember the occasion. Did any of you guys want to say something? No? Okay. I thought I'd offer. You never know. Thank you, guys, for coming. Oh, John? So we have a couple proclamations to go ahead and read this evening. Our first proclamation is proclaiming the week of April 8th through 12th, 2019, as the Week of the Young Child. And if I could go ahead, we have, I'm going to present these to the childcare teachers at Menlo Child Center, Sherrell Minor and Yessenia Guzman. Did I get that right?
Yes, yes.
Yessenia, great. You guys can go ahead and join me. Oh, and Rosanna Acosta, if you could join us. Yeah, I thought you, my children were a while back now, went to the Menlo Child Center and Rosanna taught them. Yeah, Max. Yep. All right, so the proclamation. Whereas the City of Menlo Park, in conjunction with the California Association for the Education of Young Children and National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 8th through 12th, 2019. And whereas these organizations are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Menlo Park, California, and whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Menlo Park deserve thanks and recognition, and whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's future and the prosperity of our society, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Ray Mueller, the mayor of the City of Menlo Park, do hereby proclaim April 8th through 12th, 2019, as the Week of the Young Child in Menlo Park, and encourage all citizens to work and support and invest in early childhood in Menlo Park. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Do you guys want to come down? Park, as we are a tree city. So we are celebrating National Arbor Day 2019, and have a proclamation to celebrate that. Whereas National Arbor Day is observed on the last Friday of April each year by many states across the country for the community planting of trees, and whereas the benefits of trees as part of a stable global environment are well-recognized, and whereas the special importance of trees in urban areas must be maintained to improve air quality, provide shade, prevent erosion of topsoil and sedimentation in waterways, maintain climatic balance, and decrease wind velocities, and whereas the City of Menlo Park was historically forested by stands of oak, bay, and other trees, and whereas the preservation and planting of trees is necessary for the continued health and welfare of the citizens of this city in order to preserve the scenic beauty and historical value of trees, and whereas the City of Menlo Park is well-known for its numerous and beautiful trees, which truly enhance the desirability of Menlo Park to live, work, and play, and whereas this is the 20th anniversary of the City of Menlo Park being recognized as a member of the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA Group, and whereas the planting of a tree with myself and Mayor Pro Tem Taylor and the Environmental Quality Commission Chair Marshall and Vice Chair Price symbolizes the strong relationship values and historical significance of Menlo Park trees, now therefore I, Ray Mueller, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Menlo Park, California, acknowledge the planting of the Columbia Sycamore Tree at the Boys and Girls Club at 401 Pierce Road on April 18th, 2019, in recognition and celebration of National Arbor Day, and affirm the city council's commitment to protect and enhance Menlo Park's urban forest. And if anyone in the community would like to join us for that event, you are welcome to join us. And Mr. Marshall, I think I was supposed to ask you to come up here to present this to you, so if you want to go ahead and come on up. It's not in my notes, but I haven't seen you there. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's not on the agenda, and I don't have a proclamation for him, but he just, Scott just raised my attention that he is terming out our Environmental Quality Commission and having served two terms, and we can't let this moment pass without thanking him for the dedication he's shown our environment here in the City of Menlo Park. Scott Marshall is one of those people who is soft-spoken and has so much passion for our community and so much passion for his work, and we are truly going to miss him. So if you could please join me in a round of applause for him. So now we're going to go ahead and move, I need to report out, so we're moving to item E, report out on closed session. There was no action taken in closed session to report. So we're going to go ahead and move to our public comment period now, item F. If anyone has any public comment that they'd like to give at this time, under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clarify, state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Does anyone have any public comment this evening? Yes. I'm sorry, I should have turned that, yeah, I'll turn it back around. I gotta, I need to, we're going to have to put that in the notes. I do that every meeting. It's good to see you again, Win.
Thanks. I haven't been here in a while, and I came at the right time because you say it's, this is the week for children, right? Well, tomorrow in Sacramento, they're going to be voting on this, no on SB 276. A Voice for Choice, which is centered in Montevue, Christina Hildebrand, she's taking a group of people up to Sacramento, and this is about, they're trying to get rid of any vaccine exemption. And this is really bad because there's a lot of people that have really health issues and stuff, and they're going to try to get rid of all of these things. So what she wants everybody to do is contact their legislators, their assemblymen and their senators, and this bill, is this what it's saying? This is a summary of this, SB 276. All medical exemptions will be approved by California Department of Public Health, removing critical doctor-patient relationships. All medical exemptions requested will be based on the CDC constrictions, and it says requiring every child to, unless it has a severe anaphylactic reaction to a specific vaccine, they could not be exempt. That's pretty scary, isn't it? And I know quite a few, after being vaccinated, were vaccine-injured and were autistic afterwards. And over where I live. Anyway, many of these medical exemptions are going to be exempted, are not going to be exempted. And what amazes me is these people doing this, because I know Mr. Pan is lobbied, and he works in a university where they make the vaccines, and I'd like to see every one of them their immunization cards. I think if they're going to force these vaccines on children, and some of these things in these vaccines, it actually should have a Prop 65 labeling on it that caused cancer and reproductive harm because many of these things, like formaldehyde, that causes cancer, that's in the vaccines, polysorbide 80 causes cancer. There's about four or five things on this, and I put this on public record so you can all check it out. This is from LearnTheRisk.org, and it shows how many vaccines all these kids have, and I want to make sure Mr. Pan had all of his. And if he hasn't, he probably should have them done on TV so we can all watch. Because you know something? This is outrageous. Autism rates have gone through the roof every time they've added on more vaccines, and according to this, they claim there's over 200 more vaccines in the making. So in 2020, they're going to do forced vaccines on all adults. That's why they're doing this nationalized ID card. But the other reason, I'm going to put a lot of stuff on public record, anybody can look this stuff up. This is about vaccines, understand the dangers, and make better decisions. It has every book you could read about. And Robert F. Kennedy's on thimerosal is extremely important because that's still in the flu shot. But most of all, I came here because of Assembly Bill 967. Governor Brown in 2017 passed a bill to liquefy dead bodies and pour it down the drain. It's going to start in 2020. And I hope that everybody calls their congress and assemblymen and try to get this stopped, especially Gavin Newsom, since he wants to clean up our water, because we will be drinking this, and this is cannibalizing everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go ahead now, move on from public comment to item G on the Agenda, Commission Committee Reports. Tonight, our first commission report is item G1 from the Housing Commission. Housing Commission Chair Meg McCrosser will make the presentation. Evening, Meg.
Good morning. We're doing this long here.
That's great. Right there is fine.
Okay. All right. So we have a little PowerPoint presentation that your staff helped put together for me to make this clear and. Okay, so thanks for being willing to listen to our update. We were, I was last here in August of 2018, and so we wanted to give you an update of the things that we've been working on since then. This presentation's really kind of a summary of what's happened, and then at the end, I'll talk a little bit about some things we're hoping to work on in the future. We are currently, over the last couple meetings, we've been kind of talking about some new things we'd love to work on, but of course, we need to discuss that with you all as well. One thing I did want to say before I got into this is that this is my third year on the commission, and I can't, and as the chair, I can't tell you how proud I was to get to work with the people that have been on the commission with me this year. Everyone's really involved, really dedicated, and each year that I've been on the commission has gotten more and more just hefty in their knowledge and their interest in housing issues here in Menlo Park, and I think that it's really, really great thing, and I think it's something that I've been really proud to be part of. So I just, we have a listing here of the current commissioners. Juliana Dotick had her last meeting. She termed out after two four-year terms this month, and so we'll have an opening, and as of right now, we don't have any people who have applied for it, so we'll be, I think we'll be issuing another option for people to apply. So the next slide, we just have kind of a summary of our accomplishments. So since we last, since I was last here, we've had eight regular monthly meetings and one community meeting, and in fact, in 2018, we met every month plus a community meeting. So we've been really regular in our meeting and consistent, and most people are coming to the meetings, most of our commissioners, so it's been great. We haven't had as many BMR development term sheets to approve over the last eight months. We only approved two, but you know, that's just the way the flow of projects come in. We did create and implement a new work plan related to subcommittee. We, I'll go through this in the next slide, but we have a new subcommittee that we put together on secondary dwelling units. I'll talk about that in a second. We obviously, as you know, recommended a tenant relocation assistance ordinance. We also recommended an anti-discrimination ordinance. That was approved in August of 2018, so the same meeting that I was here when I did my update previously. We've updated our work plan. One of the things I'm most excited about is we finally got a NOFA issued. That was issued in December, and we got two applicants for projects. We're going to be hearing project presentations on those projects next month, early May. We'll then have recommendations that will come out of the June meeting that we can then forward to you in June or July, and so we're really excited about that. Three of our commissioners participated in the biannual homeless count, so they were out there helping count homeless in our area, and Commissioner Grove was able to provide support for the city council study session on homelessness by getting several organizations to come and present. So all really good things, I think, that we've been working on. So the next slide, I just wanted to kind of highlight, I kind of talked about this in August of 2018. We decided before then to implement a subcommittee structure because we felt like there was so much work that needed to be done. And so this is the listing of our current subcommittees. We used to have an anti-displacement committee that was just disbanded after the tenant relocation ordinance issue was finished. We added a secondary dwelling unit committee. They're all pretty self-explanatory. The housing policy one will vary depending on what things are kind of the hot topics that we want to work on. The marketing and outreach one is something where we're really interested in trying to make sure that people have information on what's going on here in the city, making sure that they can get access to the resources easily, knowing what's available. And then we've started doing, starting to put together some plans to do some events to kind of educate the community about need here in the community. There's going to be a community, there's going to be an event at the end of April at Kepler's that Housing Leadership Council came up with after, we had some discussions about this, about getting youth in our community to talk about housing and what it means to them. So we're trying to do some neat things like that. The NOFA committee, that was just all the work that we did trying to get the NOFA rewritten and out. I think that that's it for that on the subcommittees. Okay, so here's just kind of a listing of where we are on our priorities. We did three buckets, so we had priority one, two, and three. So priority one, we're still, in regard to the parking requirements, we're still trying to sort out how to attack that in the best way because we want to have reduced parking, potentially reduce parking requirements for affordable units, and that was based on one of the priorities the council had given us. So that's pending. The BMR guidelines, we've done two updates for those in the last year and a half, and we have one final batch of updates we'd love to work on, so we have a subcommittee working on that. Again, just trying to make them more cogent, more clear, and then obviously, things that we'll propose and then bring to you all. Obviously, the tenant relocation assistance ordinance was completed. The Adopt Home For All Resolution, that was completed. The home sharing program through Hip Housing, that's ongoing through website, mailers, things like that. We added the preservation of naturally affordable market rate units, which is kind of the preservation of market affordable units. It's kind of termed two different things, just trying to preserve what we have in the community that maybe isn't intentionally subsidized. We made that an eligible use on the NOFA because we wanted any sort of, you know, developments that maybe were in that situation to be eligible to come to the city and ask for money. So that's, again, pending. We're still kind of working on that. We moved the secondary dwelling unit issue up from priority two to one, just because we feel like we now have some time to do that, but we realize that this is going to take a lot of work, and we need to work with the planning commission to figure this one out. So this is something that's going to require, we feel, a lot of coordination and work. So on the next slide is the priority two. These first two are completed. This was to promote a first-tire program. That was something we made, we outlined as eligible and required in the NOFA for projects going forward that got BMR funds. The tenant displacement fund, that wasn't something that we had spent time on because we were focused on the ordinance, but obviously, the council decided, and with help with staff, is now working on that, so I feel like we can deem that as obviously probably a completed issue. The review and draft policy on short-term rentals, this is something that I think we're going to need to talk to you all about, make sure this is something that you all want. I could see this turning into a tenant relocation ordinance issue. I just want to make sure this is something that we, you know, talk a little bit about, but we think that it's something we should address. The priority three projects, these are, the first one, consider mandatory non-binding mediation programs. That's completed in that we, the research that we did on this indicated that it wasn't something that is really worth considering. It's not effective. It gives false hope, and so we've deemed that completed by marking it off the list. The last three, we still need to spend some time thinking through. They aren't priorities. They don't feel as important to us, so I'm not, they're not done. We haven't decided that they're fully considered, so we put them as pending. Okay. Then the last slide talks a little bit about where we are on these priorities I just went through, and then some of the other priorities that we need to further vet. The currently listed priorities, reviewing applications for the funding for the NOFA, that's something that should be happening fairly quickly, as I indicated earlier, it will be happening in May and June, and recommending recommendations to you guys hopefully in June, July. Again, the BMR guidelines, we're working on that, hoping to get some further amendments to that. The secondary dwelling unit issue, and then the policy on short-term rentals. The priorities that we've talked about that we need to kind of further vet have to do with the Bay Area Economics Nexus Fee Study review and recommendations, our hoping that we can potentially readjust the fees by bringing them up a little bit so we can raise more money, or discourage developers from giving the money versus building the units. We have a lot of, and we've said this many times, many of the commissioners, as well as myself, about talking about attacking the supply side of the issue, so let's build some units in central Menlo Park. Let's look at the parking structure idea. Let's look at a public lands idea. So these are some things that are related. So these are some things that are related to that. And then, we have some other ideas for tenant protection ordinances. But I fully realize after the tenant relocation ordinance situation, I feel like we need to be really, really understand clearly what are priorities for you all. We spent so much time on that ordinance. And I feel like it was probably not a great use of all of our time because we didn't get what we wanted at all. So I don't want to do that again. I want us to be able to do things that really, that can get through the council, that can really make a difference for the people living here in Menlo Park and that isn't wasting people's time. If we all had a ton of time in the world, I would always want to push all these things. But I'd really love to be super effective and helpful for the people here in Menlo Park. So, I think the idea is, and I could be wrong about this. I think the idea is that we want to come forward to you in the next month or so with a list of some of our proposed priorities and get your feedback so we know where you are on those, those items. But that being said, if you have any questions or comments on anything I presented, I'd love to hear from you now. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember Carlton.
So first of all, thank you so much for the hard work that you guys do. I know, no good deed goes unpunished, sometimes it feels like. And you guys really are dedicated. And I want you to know, I think all of us really appreciate the hard work that you do. The one thing that I don't see on the list, and I've, I've discussed it with the mayor, is we've had reports from people that have young children that live in apartment buildings that are really suffering because of the way air circulates in, in many apartment buildings. They have people who are smoking that is impacting their children. Now, not only cigarettes, but marijuana smoke is in their apartment when they have babies and children with asthma. And as a parent, I, I can only imagine how frustrating, how horrific it would be to have my children exposed to that and know that I can't afford to move without risking being homeless. And so, this is something that I think is really critical. And it's going to impact the housing as well. So I'm just kind of putting that on your agenda, that this is something really important that I think we need to look at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, again, thank you very much for, for your service. And, and I appreciate the, you know, the desire for some, some clarity and a feeling that you, you guys are working towards a goal that the council supports. I, I would add though, two, two things. One, sometimes there is value in the debate, right? Even if it doesn't end the way you, you want it to. It is, there is value in the community having something and, and having a debate. And, and sometimes, there is no other way than to put all that time and that effort and, and bring it through the process. And so, I, I don't want you to think, although I know, like, we can all think that if we don't have that clear impact and that, that, that end goal that we, we, we were expecting or we wanted, that, that sometimes, that the, the value isn't there. And I would say that, that also know that there, there is, there is great value in the debate. And, and I would lead, you know, use that to also say that I certainly think that we, we owe you guys and all the commissioners some clarity on what our priorities are. And, and to make sure that, that you're being used most effectively. But also, there can never be any guarantee, right? I mean, sometimes it is, it is at that moment on the dais where, where we're looking at this. And then, going back to that value of the debate where, where we'll, you know, where we really get a sense of, of what the, the impact of the community is going to be. But, you know, I just wanted to share, those were my thoughts. But again, very much appreciate the, the service. And this seems like a pretty robust work plan. And I, I look forward to working with you guys in the years ahead.
Thank you.
Amen, well said. Thank you.
So I just have a question, actually just comment. So the chronic homelessness issue that we looked at earlier this year, we have that coming back to council, right? Yeah. And so, I, I want to make sure that it does actually go to the housing commission to look at that issue. I haven't talked, so, we're obviously coordinating a number of service providers in the county. When I talk to Life Moves and I talk to the county and then I talk to the Complete Streets, like, all of those folks were excited to come. But we need to coordinate, we need to really figure out, and I know our staff's working on that. I'd love to hear, I'd love to have the commission weigh in on that. It's going to be complicated trying to go ahead and address chronic homelessness. And so, to get some feedback from the commission on how to do that, especially at this, at this juncture, would be great. Because one of the, obviously, one of the, one of the things that I value very much the commissions is the ability to go ahead and talk to members of the public as well about proposals. And in dealing with chronic homelessness right now, candidly, as mayor, I am getting information which is totally divergent from different members of the community, where I have some who are really upset with chronic homelessness downtown. And then, there are others who will do anything to help. And what I need to, we need to come up with a solution because people are suffering in our downtown, basically. And so, but the solution that we come forward with, I really would value very much the community helping us vet. Because some of it, and it may end up being, so, an example would be what we heard in that study session was talking about, talking about how you can't take away people's possessions. And we would never want to do that. But is it possible to create a place for people to store possessions? So it's safer for them. But then also, might satisfy some of the concerns of community members and also bridge that time period. Solutions like that, we're going to need, we're really going to need your help in talking to the community about. Because there's only so much bandwidth we have and staff has. And the commissions, commissions really function really well to take that input in and test that with, with, with community members. So I really want to encourage you to, you guys to dive into that issue and help us. And I know, I know that where the council ended up on the tenant relocation for some members of the commission left the, left a bad taste, candidly. But I do think, policy-wise, it moved the needle. I think that where we are as a city, as a result, at the end of that process is stronger than where we were in the beginning. And I think that in terms of being able, the metrics that you guys really want in order to go ahead and, and point to make the arguments you want, those metrics at the end of this process will either be there or they won't. And so, and part of that was, part of the whole discussion, I think, really was, was that the metrics were confounding in that discussion. And so, if we can go ahead and get around that, I think that that will, because when you walk in here, and I'm, you've been through this in a number of jurisdictions, there's anecdotal evidence and discussions like that. And then, you're trying to go ahead and shape policy around that. But you're not really sure what you can touch and what legally you're allowed to touch. When you have exact metrics that you're capturing over time, and we will, because we will be dispersing money to people who need help. And when we do, we will be capturing why it is that they need it. And when, after you do that over a period of time, then you have metrics to base your decisions off of whether or not you need to change policy, tweak it, or go a different course. So, and we would not be there but for the discussion and for the push. It's the same thing I said to Chris and, to Chris and Mitch the night that we adopted the, the, our environmental goals way back when, was, we push us. And you guys have pushed us. And I don't want you, I actually am concerned that, I don't want you to be in complete alignment with us.
I think that's how I've always felt too. I think this was a really rough, this was a really tough one.
I understand.
It was, it was a really tough one because we really felt like we did our due diligence. And we asked the community comment. We really tried to come up with a moderate solution. I totally agree with everything you're saying and understand. I'm just telling you, this one, it was, it was, it was, I know I'm not supposed to say this, but it was like an emotional issue.
It is.
And, and part of the problem too is I work in affordable housing every day. And I, I live this, so I know. And it just, it just, it was really, really hard. So, I want to, I do want to push you guys. But I want to be careful to not discourage people to come onto the commission to think that they're going to be working for things that, that aren't going to be successful. Because you've got to have a little bit of success to feel like you're making a difference. So, it's one of those, it's tough. It's just a tough situation.
And I think, yeah, I think that it may not still feel that way. But I think a few months from now, you'll see that there is success in where we ended up. So, but I can't express enough how much we value your work. We do. We value the commission's work. And I encourage you guys to keep pushing us. And it's, it's in the pushing that we end up where we need to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, thanks so much.
Thanks, have a great evening. Our next, our next speaker this evening will be item G2, Park and Recreation Commission update. Our Park and Recreation Commissioner Chair Jennifer Johnson will make the presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me. This is our, a tall person was here before. Thank you for having me this evening. I was actually here, I think, in January when the Complete Streets report was being presented. And the Parks and Rec Commission was very supportive of, of that plan and what it would be able to accomplish for some of our parks, especially Nealon. I'm here to give a quarterly report today. And we have some exciting news. We've actually done some things that's really great. We were stalled a little bit in terms of there were some projects that were, you know, approved by the commission, recommended to council, council approved, the funds were there and everything. But there wasn't, you know, the staff, staffing wasn't, was lacking. But Jack Lyle Park now has a bathroom, which I'm sure you all know. That's a very huge thing in the community. Willow Oaks Park will be getting a bathroom. And at some point, that dog park is going to also be refreshed. And Nealon Park, there's, ground has finally been broken, which is wonderful. And the biggest thing we've been working on is the master plan. And the commission has, you know, been in close contact with the consultants for that planning process. We've had, we have a subcommittee that participates on the Oversight and Outreach Subcommittee for the master plan process. We've had lots and lots of community engagement. And I expect that there will be more now that the recommendations are, are out. But that's going to give us an exciting, you know, direction for where to head next. A couple of the things I wanted to mention, some of you know better than others. My, my particular bent for inclusive recreation in parks. And the Parks and Rec Department has finalized the city's inclusion policy, which is great. And is exploring ways to expand adaptive programming for people of all abilities. So that's one thing. Let's see, we already talked about that. Nealon Park, when it's finished, will be an all-inclusive playground. And it will be a demonstration site, a nationwide demonstration site. And I cannot remember all the different things for, it meets all the criteria, but there's like eight of them. And one of them, of course, is, is all the natural elements. But also, including equipment that will allow children of all ages to target the different physical areas of development appropriately. So that's also a big one. Let's see. Oh, this is one that was particularly close to my heart. Working with the library to launch the Little Free Libraries Grant Program. I thought that that was a really nice solution to, to the challenge for that. And I think that those, those grants, I'm really hopeful that that increases the Little Free Libraries around, around the city. And let's see, big one, Bellhaven Child Development Center received their Big Lift Grant of $150,000 for, and will be using that to continue to improve programming and child literacy. And then, just down the street, the two new storyboards at Fremont Park. So those are the highlights. There's a lot more, but that's, that's kind of the highlights of what we've been doing. And then, pretty soon, we'll be doing a lot more of the master plan stuff again. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? I just, no, I just want to say, great work.
Thank you.
So, always, always loved the report of the work you guys are doing at Park and Rec. It's awesome.
It's, it's an honor to, to be able to do the work. It's a great joy.
And I'm really looking forward to seeing the inclusionary policy. I know how hard you've worked on that. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker this evening is item G3, Finance and Audit Committee. Our Chair Ron Shepard will make the presentation. Good evening, Ron.
Not being as youthful as the prior speakers, I've decided to sit down.
Absolutely.
But I make my presentation. So honorable councilmembers, it's a great pleasure to speak to you tonight to discuss Finance and Audit Committee activities and related progress and our recommendations. It's interesting, recently, the city clerk contacted me and said, Ron, you've, you've been on the committee for two years. Are you going to re-up? And I said, well, certainly, it's a lot of fun. Then I noted that Suti Tronson's been on the committee for three years. And this is the first time we've made a presentation to the council. So, we're, we're pretty excited about that. The, the role and specific duties, you know, of the committee are listed on the slide. But basically summarized this, to support the delivery of timely, clear, and comprehensive reporting of the city's financial status. And our agenda is also listed on the slide. So, I would like to thank the committee members and the subcommittee members for all their efforts in the investigation of the subject matters and in the presentation, in the preparation of the presentation. You should also note that while these items are presented individual, individually, we recognize that many of them are interrelated.
We lost your mic. There you go.
Is it on that?
Yep, that red light will tell you, on the side.
Oh, okay. So last year, we reviewed the audit report for the June 30th to 17 year-end. And our important observations were related to the calculation of the unfunded pension liability and a notation in the report of several deficiencies in internal control mainly related to procedures for approval of expenditures. We reviewed the procedures for approval of expenditures, expenditures. And, and they were quite difficult and hard to work with. And so, we recommended that they be changed, and they have been changed. We did not review the audit report for this year. I think it was presented late. And we could, had one chance to get a quorum together to review it and didn't have time. So it was presented to you before we were able to review it. Subsequently, we did review it, and we had, three questions came about. The first one, again, was the inadequacy in our view of the amount of unrecorded, of the unfunded pension liability. Also, the, there are a number of footnotes on the activities of the Community Development Agency, mainly related to the disposition of assets and the related refunding of bonded debt. We would like to look into that. It, it's unclear to us is what's really going on. Also, the auditor commented on the number of late year-end closings. And we were told this is related to other departments not reporting activities timely to the finance department so they couldn't record the, their necessary entries. But this has, this has been resolved. Lenka's had some meetings with the, with the other department heads to say, hey, we can't record the information unless you get it to us, basically. So our recommendation is, get the audit done, or have the audit done in a more timely way so we can review it and report our, the results of our review to you. A late item that we wanted to talk to you about is the staff has sent out an RFP for new auditors. They've received three responses. And the question is, would you like us to review? They've received three responses and the question is, would you like us to review those responses and make a recommendation to you? We don't have much time to call a meeting. We have had problems getting a quorum, but we've changed some things so that the quorum is present, so if you'd like us to, I'll call a meeting. There are only three responses, so it won't take long to review that. So you'd like us to do that?
So are you done with your report? Because I don't, are you done with?
No, 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 no.
All right, go ahead and go and then we'll go through the questions at the end.
One of our duties is to review the investment policy. We do that on an annual basis and basically, you just follow the state law and what you can invest in and what you can't, and you're following the state law. But we did have some recommendations for you to consider. You basically use one audit, one investment advisor. You have over 100 million in investable assets. We think you should divide the assets, use two investment advisors and on others that I've worked with, they'll have like a three-year contract with the investment advisors and the one that does the best job keeps the contract for the next three years and you send an RFP out for the next one. We think that might help increase your investment income. Another issue that came to mind is a listing of the investments on a quarterly basis so the citizens could see exactly what the city is investing in. And you have a page in the audit report listing investments and I think it would be pretty simple just to list them on a website. Another item that came up was that, and we did not, we will not make a recommendation on this, other than to say that we think you should list the activities or the industries that are involved in the investments so that should citizens decide, for example, that they didn't want to invest in marijuana growers, you could do that, or ammunition makers or... But that, something for, you know, the citizen to get involved in, not us, other than to list the assets. One of the subcommittees has spent a lot of time in preparing a memo to ask that capital expenditures be more transparent, in this sense that we would suggest that you have one page that lists a line item, each capital expenditure, CIP, that's been approved or is, you've looked at it a lot. And that would be followed by a one-page for each item. And basically, it was asked, it would explain what the capital project is, what it's for, how much it's going to cost, where are you going to get the money, how you're going to fund it, and when you need the money. And if there are any other capital items that are interrelated to that. So we're asking for a lot of transparency so the citizens know what you're doing. When I followed Betsy around in District Four during the campaign, a lot of citizens were just unaware that you were considering spending $50 million for a new library and they were just astonished. Part of that is because there was no website like this so you could see what's going on. And another part that you can't fix is, you know, taxpayer laziness that don't get involved in these things. But there's nowhere that you can really look and see, get the information on the capital projects that we're asking for. This is just an example of something that you could use or develop that would give the information that we think the residents need. Other item that we've been looking at is the information technology infrastructure. We ask finance, how is it coming? And they say, oh, it's moving along. But as we look at this infrastructure plan, we don't see any metrics as to when the product will be delivered, how much it's going to cost. And there was nowhere in the project listing for the finance department and we think that's where you need some upgrading of the data processing. So we recommend that you move this to the front burner. This is just an example of... Wait, let me back up a minute. This is an example of... Is this moving? Let me skip this one. The next item is the pensions. And we're extremely concerned about the unfunded pension liability and the realistic calculation of what that amount ought to be. Page 102 of the audit report shows the unfunded pension liability is around 32 million dollars. It also shows that the unfunded portion or the funded portion has decreased from 81% of the total liability to 74%. So even though CalPERS is raising your contributions, they're getting behind. So the total liability, as there's more, the unfunded piece keeps growing. In addition, they use a discount rate of 7.15% when they compute the unfunded liability or compute the total amount. And based on CalPERS' last five years' annualized earnings, as reported by Bloomberg, they earned an average of... About 4.7% if you discount it for the unfunded portion. So this would result, if you used 4.7%, that would mean that your unfunded liability is understated by $42 million. So instead of 32, it should be 74. I'm really disappointed that this hasn't been pointed out by your consulting actuary and he did make a presentation about a year and a half ago to the Finance and Audit Committee and I asked him about this and he said, our understanding is correct. But his analysis was, Ron, it doesn't really matter because if you don't fund it enough this year, you can always make up the funding later on. And I just didn't like that answer because I think you should know what you're liable for so that you can properly plan for it and not be in a position of you've got to make it up later. The next item we looked at was the, called the Budget Process. I don't mean to be critical, but I guess this is. The budget seems to me to be more of a marketing piece than a financial budget. There's a lot of paper that's filled up with what's been done and statistics on how many emails are answered and that sort of thing. And it's difficult to see why there are increases in expenses that are not explained. And a good example of that, and we're going to pick on the city manager's budget because he's gone, you have a new one. But...
Okay.
So I can... So in there is a line item called Services. And two years ago, it was $211,000 and the year after that was 317 and budgeted for, or proposed budgeted for this year or next year is $820,000. And there's no sort of explanation of why do you need that all that extra money? I'm sure it's okay, but how does the public kind of get a handle on that and say, we're spending on money wisely? It doesn't mean you're not, but there's just...
I understand.
It's hard to sort out. The next item is consultant contractor policies. And I don't know if you get it, but I get it a lot and it's the residents say, why does the city hire so many consultants? And our suggestion is that you list the consultants that you use that are over 50,000 a year and have some sort of continuum, so if you use them once or twice, you get an additive. And then what they're doing so that you have a... The residents can see exactly what you're spending. And I think if you do that, you probably, some of these questions about why do we always need consultants would go away because they could see from your report. We had a little discussion before on the Finance and Audit Committee meeting schedule. As I reported earlier, we had trouble getting a quorum. That, I think, has been changed because we've decided to meet in the evening and so that makes it easier for everybody to attend. We did have a, an issue come up at our last meeting that I'd like to run by you. When we were discussing our recommendations, council members said, I don't really want to vote on that because if I vote yes, that we should discuss it, it would appear that I'm for it and I don't want to give that, send that message, although I'd like to discuss it. So we have suggested that you consider increasing the number on the Finance Audit Committee to, from three, non-council members to five. And that way, the council members could kind of abstain from voting and we still have enough to get a good vote. Personally, the professional makeup of the Finance and Audit Committee is four attorneys and one finance person. And I'd like to get some support from, with more finance people so that instead of a lot of wherasses and heretofores and now therefores, we can add some dollars and cents.
Should I be offended as one of the attorneys?
Yeah. And I would have to say that the cens is spelled C-E-N-T-S, not the other way. But, so I think increasing the staffing, we've got a lot to do and we'd have more people for our subcommittee. So in summary, we want your advice and direction on our recommendations and what you'd like us to do. And I'm not sure how we get that. Do you tell us now or do you?
No.
Talk about it and?
So we can't, we can't do it now. Because what would need to happen is that we need to, we, obviously, we need a staff report and we also need to have it teed up on an agenda as an action item for a vote that evening before, could be something that we could give, or even as, even as an item for direction, because right now, it's simply agendized as a report. But what I can do, Ron, is I can sit down with you and the city manager and figure out how to unpack some of this.
Okay.
And then bring it back. There's a tremendous amount of work here. I know I speak for every, every one of my colleagues when I say, we really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the amount of work you've put into this. And so what we have to do though is we have to unpack it, figure out how to dice it up and then figure out how to go ahead and get staff reports for it and get it all framed correctly so that council can look at each item and make a decision on how to proceed on it.
Okay. I'd be glad to meet with you and the city manager on that and...
Wonderful. That'd be great. And for some of the items, it will already fit within our work plan and then for some of, and then there may be that, a couple items that I'll have to bring back to the council and ask them under an agendized question whether or not they want to hear it within the work plan this year or whether it's something they want to wait on. But either way, there'll be notice on that, so.
Well, the hot ones in our mind are the pension liability and the CIP website.
I appreciate that completely and appreciate the work that you've put into both of those. So, and I understand the concern of the CIP came out of the project last year, but I would note that during the project last year, the council did ultimately say that for an item of that time, of that amount, would need to go before the voters. And that wasn't something that during that process changed. There was some concern it might, but it never did. So, but I do understand, regardless, I do understand that there isn't a, I don't know why we're getting feedback. I do understand why there is, why you'd be concerned about that, that there isn't a policy outlining as such for a certain dollar amount. So we'll go ahead and sit down and figure this out. But I, so, but a tremendous amount of work, product, very much appreciative. Thank you.
Okay, I should, I have to ask Suti, did I leave anything out, Suti?
So, so future agenda items? Right, future agenda items, and I can go ahead and handle that now for you guys. Future agenda items for the city is actually, I think we actually have within the agenda tonight, a listing of future agenda items. So we, the city once had a policy where it would show future issues coming in advance, in advanced calendar. We are doing that again now and we're actually, and if, sorry, Ms. Robinson, if you want to go ahead and explain?
Sure. So we've added a new continuing item to the agenda and tonight it's Q, or K4, sorry. So it's the last item on the agenda and that lists by quarter what we, what we know now as upcoming items. And we'll have an item on every agenda that continues to update that quarterly report.
So we're working hard to show transparency of what's within our work plan and what's coming up, so people aren't just waiting till Thursday before the council meeting, but they have some vision into what's coming?
No, I'm sorry, I meant on our future agenda items.
Oh, your future agenda, oh, my apologies.
Well, no, I should have stopped you, but...
Okay.
We've had difficulty in getting minutes published on a timely basis, so at our meeting, we're going to ask whoever takes the minutes to tell us what their, how they wrote up, have written up the minutes so we can get a draft before we leave and approve it, not for publication, but just so we all know what, what we discussed and the decisions we made, because there, sometimes it's some confusion about what the...
We'll figure that out. We'll problem solve with you that, so it's no problem. We can problem solve that.
And then a future agenda item we'd like to look at is the debt management policies and legal requirements.
So your work plan will be coming toward the council separately as a separate item for approval?
All right, we'll do, okay.
Yeah, so like, for instance, tonight, we have the Environmental Quality Work Plan coming before us for approval. So sitting within, sitting down with staff, figuring out what's within the work plan and then we approve it then. So I can't, I can't say yes or no to stuff like that tonight without it being agendized.
Okay, I understand the work plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Suti, yes.
Good evening and thank you for giving me the time to comment further. I think the main issue that we have of the community is that we are at the heart of sneaking back. Technology is our fundamentals and yet we don't have the proper open government website, the proper and easy to access information. It's very difficult to remain informed resident. If, you know, if concerned residents continue to have, what can we possibly do to bother, for example, the staff? If that information were in fact available in many other cities, on the website in an easy to find way, we wouldn't actually spend so much time contacting the staff and stuff happening to wrong end of people. And I think that actually doesn't speak very well that we are right here, at the heart and yet we don't have proper visualization of the transparency and information.
So I believe what's... So I believe what's...I believe the comment is being addressed within the technology master plan process, which the city is undertaking right now, and that's one of the transparency is one of the goals of that process. So the problem for a long time is the city had a legacy system. Frankly, that became outdated and was on crutches for a very long time. We have a technology master plan process the city is going through right now. There was some discussion of whether or not to go ahead and engage in purchasing a new legacy system or something more nimble, and so that...but with the...that is coming forward and address it, but I understand the concern completely, and it's something that we're addressing, so looking forward to sit down. Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. What you're talking about is something that we reviewed a couple of years ago when I was on the Finance Committee, and it was one of the things that I was really pushing for, along with many other things on the IT master plan, and absolutely, I agree, absolutely, it's been reviewed. By the time it comes up, we're going to have to review it again, because the technology will have changed, but that's absolutely something that's been identified, continues to be identified, and I sincerely hope gets implemented soon.
Wow, so anyway, I want to thank you both...thank you both this evening for your report, and we'll go ahead and set some time aside with the city manager to go ahead and figure out next steps, to unpack it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item this evening on the agenda-
Mayor Mueller, pardon the interruption. We do have a public comment on this item.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see that, so...yes, Lynn.
Hello, council, I'll be brief. So more than a year ago, I started routinely attending the Finance and Audit Committee meetings and also carefully reading the reports, and I cannot echo enough that we need more transparency, and especially when we have these major reports, the public needs an opportunity to, you know, read them and ask questions about them in an interactive environment. The CAFRA, the Comprehensive Financial Annual Report, that was submitted to you, I was there that night. It wasn't a night to ask questions about the content, and I had a number of questions, and I think some of those questions weren't additional agenda topics at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. For example, there was a thirty-three point...thirty-three-point-zero-seven million debt that's not being added to our overall debt totals, because it's being paid for out of property owners in Bellhaven tied to a former redevelopment agency, so I was curious. I had a number of questions, and I got a response, but I didn't get answers. I mean, I got information, but it didn't really answer my questions, so I'd like to suggest that with our upcoming budget process, we also take a different approach than last year. Last year, at the city manager's budget workshop, we received the completed budget at the meeting, and later the city manager was proud, the former one, that there were no questions. I heard him announce that, and I believe it was even in a staff report. Well, no surprise there, and if you can't read a complicated...you know, no one's going to ask questions if they can't read it, so we need more public notice, and then I want to comment on that debt management policy that Ron brought up. That's a law that we're supposed to have. One, it was discussed at their Finance and Audit Committee. I don't remember the date. I think maybe August, July. It was supposed to go to the former council in September, and it didn't, because I looked at the agenda, and I checked in on it, and I was told that this is just a, quote, "housekeeping matter, and it'll come to you soon," but I am overall concerned when I see we're not following a law, because these laws that we're not following, this one for sure, it's aimed at the public good. So I think when we find out that there's something like that, we should make it a priority to start following it. So the other thing I want to mention, I think it'd be good to clarify with the staff when they're empowered and when they have to go to council, because I did write one of the finance staff suggesting that they post certain reports, and I got told it has to go through council.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Okay, any other questions on this topic? No. All right, so we will follow up on the issues raised as indicated, and appreciate the comments. The next item this evening is item G4, the Environmental Quality Commission update. Our Environmental Quality Commissioner, Scott Marshall, will make the presentation.
Well, welcome and hello to the new city council members, and Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Carlton. I would like to read our mission statement, so we can just kind of refresh the commission...excuse me, refresh the council about what the Environmental Quality Commission does. The Environmental Quality Commission mission is to commit...oh, boy, is to be committed...is to be committed to helping the city of Menlo Park to be a leading sustainability city that is well-positioned to manage present and future environmental impacts. The EQC is charged with advising the city council on matters involving environmental protection, environmental improvement, and sustainability. A little background, the EQC gives guidance to the city council for water conservation, for promoting carbon-reducing policies. We also are driving force behind programs for polystyrene elimination in city services. As we also help reduce waste, we are guiding the city on reducing waste on construction sites. We are also working on improving increased recycling programs for business and residents. The EQC is also in the process of working with the Heritage Tree Task Force on updating the heritage tree ordinance and working on a policy that will expand the city's urban forest. This past quarter, we have submitted our two-year work plan to council. Our proposed guideline for the next two years include the Climate Action Plan. This targets greenhouse gas reduction for the city. We are exploring transitioning to a zero-emission city fleet with all-electric vehicles. We are also working with urban canopy preservation to continue develop a comprehensive urban canopy strategy, including revising the heritage tree ordinance and establishing an urban canopy inventory. One of the other items on the two-year work plan is green and sustainability development. We want to expand and enhance sustainability development practices, including green and sustainability building requirements, land use, and transportation. The EQC has also worked on the Community Zero Waste Plan. We have guided city services to an environmentally preferable purchasing policy, where they use reusable dishware, recycled products instead of plastics, compostable products when necessary, and using water from drinking fountains instead of supplying employees with bottled water. The EQC is exploring a recommendation to adopt the 2020 Energy Reach Codes for new development. The Reach Codes are updated every three years by the state, and they help improve...excuse me, improve building codes to create a more energy-efficient building platform for new building projects. Local governments can adopt more stringent codes that will help them lower the greenhouse gas output. We have a new commissioner, Rebecca Turley, and one of the things she has been interested in is looking into...looking into the alternatives for gla...excuse me, gas-powered leaf blowers. That's in the future, but that's something we have discussed. One of the last things we worked on was a heritage tree appeal. It was just a couple weeks ago that the EQC had their first heritage tree meeting in the council chambers. There was over forty members of the public in attendance, and this was a...the appellate's request to deny the permit for the removal of seven heritage trees at 100 El Camino. I would have to say that that meeting was an eye-opening experience for all of us. We learned that possibly the EQC and the planning commission might want to do a little more review prior to getting to that point. It was at least a three- or four-year work...three- or four-month process for the permit applicant, and we reviewed over a lot of different options, and it seemed like for the safety of the building...safety of the people in the building and the condition of the building, the council voted four to three to have those beautiful trees removed. It was a very difficult meeting for all of us. Lastly, as Ray...as-
You can call me Ray.
As mayor-
That's my name.
Mueller has brought up. This is my last quarter report, and I will term out next month, and I have to say that being a part of city government for the last eight years has been an incredible experience. I love Menlo Park. I have grown as being a part of this whole process. I respect what everybody else does with the city, and I realize that if you want something done, you have to participate. Sitting on the sidelines won't get you anywhere, so it has been wonderful. I...I can spend some more time with my sons on Wednesday nights, but it's been great, and do you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Wait, wait, wait.
I was just...no, I wasn't excusing you. I was saying thank you very much for all the work you've done. I mean, you've given years of your life to this, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you guys. So without commenting on the item, because it may come to us in appeal, I wanted to express my thanks to all the commissioners for the work that you all just went through. I know how gut-wrenching for everybody on the Environmental Quality Commission that entire process was. I know how passionate people are in the city over that issue on both sides. To put yourself in that position as a resident because you care about the city is something that I just...I honor you guys greatly for. I thank you for that, and I'm really going to miss you on the commission, Scott. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. We...well, the Heritage Tree Task Force is working on a new heritage tree ordinance, so in time, we'll present something to the council, and hopefully it will be more smoothly for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really have enjoyed my time here. Thank you.
And just to clarify, you'll remain on the Heritage Tree Task Force until that's-
Correct. I have been voted to be the representative for the EQC. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead...is there any comments on that item? No? All right, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent calendar. Does anyone want to poll any items from the consent calendar this evening?
I have questions on H1 and H4. I don't...that might be quickly answered without pulling them personally.
All right, let's start with H1.
But we can vote on the other two if you want to do that for-
Let's wait and see if we need to poll. So any questions on each...the questions on each one?
To the city manager, I've given you these questions, so I assume you know what I'm going to ask.
Let's hope.
All right, on page nine, it says that there was a discussion regarding...you know what, it wasn't part of the action. It was just part of the...it was just part of the statement, part of the report, but it talked about how the tenant relocation funds were primarily for relocation, which I thought was kind of odd, because it's the tenant relocation fund. It is for relocation and related issues. Primarily just seemed to me kind of an odd thing to say. Was that kind of a word typo, or...
I'm going to defer to the city clerk on this.
All right, if it's an edit...if this is an edit question, why don't we go ahead and just take those off, and we'll bring them back?
Okay.
All of the edits, including this one to the minutes, have been provided on the dais as well as to the public before the start of the meeting.
All right, so let's poll...let's just poll the minutes. You guys can talk about the edits later. We'll just poll if there's some...if there's like edits to do it, that's...is that agreeable to everyone? Great, yes?
Yep.
Wonderful. Okay, H4.
I want to go back to H3.
We'll go back to H3 in one second.
Okay.
H4.
On the EV chargers, I just wanted to make sure that we were setting up the EV chargers in a thoughtful way, and with regard to how many electric cars we have, how many hybrid cars, how many EV chargers are we putting in the corp yard, how many...as long as we're digging up and we put one in, unless it's the lowest-level charger where we're basically just putting in a plug. If we're really setting up for EV chargers, how many are we putting in? What's the conduit? Have we thought this through, so that we're planning appropriately for the future? I just wanted some clarity on that.
Yeah, so Chris Lamb, Assistant Public Works Director of Engineering, the amendment that's part of the well contract is to take that planning into account. The well project is already requiring an upgrade to the electrical panel, and knowing that there's a future EV charging project coming for electric vehicles, we want to make sure that we source everything appropriately at that time.
Excellent, so you haven't determined exactly how many, but you've set up the electricity to support-
Right, this is to make sure that we plan for the electricity correctly for the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to now...Mayor Protem Taylor has a question about item H3.
I asked a few questions of the...thank you. I asked a few questions of the city manager yesterday, and I wasn't sure if you were able to get some of those questions answered.
Chris is here to respond to those questions as well.
Oh, thank you. Okay, my questions are about the...well, first I'll talk about the funding. From table one on page 27, for the funding, is this for different buckets of money, or is this one pot? And that's for repairs to local streets, matching funds for local agencies, bike and pedestrian projects, and local planning grants.
I'm not sure which document you're looking at.
So I'm looking at the first page. It's page 27 for H3, the agenda item.
The...table one is the...is what the SB1 state programmed as for funding.
So is it one bucket of funds, or is it just...it is. My next question is, can...looking at the list of projects, some of these streets had repairs done or work done by West Bay Sanitary, and so isn't West Bay Sanitary required to resurface the street if they dug them up, and so we shouldn't be using these funds to do that?
Is...if the concern is on Hamilton specifically, or...
Well, it's a few streets. It's not just Hamilton. It's actually a street that's a couple blocks from here as well.
Okay. The...as we plan our streets projects each year, the city utilizes a software called Streetsaver. It's run by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, so we're a partner in that. That's the system that the city uses to systematically plan each year's street resurfacing projects. Obviously, that program isn't smart enough to understand every single utility project that's going on within the city, so the engineers, as we look at what streets that system produces, we will verify with the various utilities what work is going on. The utilities like West Bay Cal Water are required to restore their trenches, not always to necessarily repave the entire street, so the pavement restoration that's done by the utilities, while our standard detail is a little more intensive than a lot of our neighboring agencies, will still ultimately look piecemeal, and the city should eventually still come through and repave the streets. The utilities aren't going to repave the entire street for us.
Well, I wasn't expecting that. If you look at some of the streets where West Bay was doing work, there are some holes in the streets, and it wasn't like that prior, so even if they didn't resurface the entire street, they should at least flatten out the hole that they created, and so I just wanted to make sure that the streets that are on here are ones that they didn't work on, because to me, that would make sense. If they caused the damage, they should fix it.
I know that a lot of the streets that West Bay's been working on recently, I still have the temporary paving conditions in them. They've been delayed quite a bit by the weather this past winter, but if there's specific streets that you want us to look at, then we can definitely look into those in more detail.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a follow-on question for what Vice Mayor Taylor just asked. Are we talking about repaving or slurry sealing?
This year is resurfacing, so it's a...it's about a two-inch paving.
So it's really digging it up and repaving, not just doing the usual slurry seal that we use?
Yeah, there's a few different terms that we use in the pavement management restoration, so a slurry seal is a very thin layer of preventative maintenance. We'll do overlays, which are a two-to-three-inch layer of asphalt, which will sometimes be ground out those two, three inches beforehand, and then there's also full pavement reconstruction, where we need to repair even the base underneath the roadway that's failed, so this year's is...the work that's being proposed is that middle option, the two-to-three-inch layer that may ground off and then repaved.
I just kind of wish, to the Vice Mayor's point, that we could communicate with people when they're doing work to see if- with people when they're doing work to see if, if some shared costs can occur so that someone doesn't dig a hole, spend a lot of time fixing a hole, and then it gets dug up anyway, and...
Sure.
You know, it's that kind of dig-once kind of philosophy where we run efficiently.
Understood.
You're good. Uh, I have a question, and I guess we should've just polled the item, but we are where we are. Can we add a street to this, or how were, how were these streets chosen? Because there is one street not on this list that is a mess. Middle is a mess right now. I don't know if it was the rains or what happened, but it is, the pavement is in really bad shape.
So, we have, we have, um, uh, on, in next year's, next summer's program, we have both Santa Cruz Avenue and Middle Avenue?
Okay.
So, those are, I, I don't know exactly which segment of Middle you're, you're, you're referring to, but, but Middle Avenue is...
Pretty much, the whole thing is...
Okay.
I don't know if it was the rains or what, but the, I mean, it's getting pretty bad. I'd really encourage our engineers to go out and take a look at it. We might wanna try to move something up in the process.
Middle, Middle is, is a separately funded project in the five-year CIP.
Okay.
There's actually, I believe, some grants associated with that project.
All right. Great.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add? So, the purpose of this item is to be compliant with SB1. This is not a complete list of the streets that we intend to do, do work on, uh, in the coming year.
We just don't need SB1 funds for the other streets?
Correct.
All right.
Correct. And we have to have the council adopt a list of the streets that are going to be done with SB1 money so that they can hold us accountable for only doing those streets.
All right. Fair enough. All right. So, I think we have all the questions answered. Do, can I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I, I'm not sure. Did we answer the, the primary? I guess that doesn't really factor into the, to the motion in a substantive way, does it? I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, it was edited to show that the city council wants it just for the relocation assistance.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I don't mean to be pedantic, but you always have to be careful what you put in writing. Thank you.
Okay. So, are we moving forward then with the minutes?
So, moved.
All right. So, let's go ahead then. I move all H1 through H4. Do I have a second? Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great. So, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our public hearing. Item I1, consider an appeal of the Planning Commission approval of a use permit revision to update the use of the existing Phillips Brooks School at 2245 AV Avenue, adding an annual summer enrichment program to the regular operation of the school, increasing the employee cast, cap from 58 to 68, 58 to 68 employees year-round. Associate Planner Matthew Pruder will make the presentation. The appellant will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. The applicant will have 10 minutes to make their presentation.
Mayor Mueller?
Yes.
I have been told by the city attorney that I live too close, and I must be recused from this.
Okay. I also understand, yes, Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I, I also have to be recused because I voted on this matter when it came before the Planning Commission, but now, I, I don't have to leave the room. But do I have to leave the dais? Just...
Uh, you should leave the dais, but you do not have to leave the room.
But I have to leave the room.
Councilmember Carlton is required to leave the room. All right?
All right.
We'll wait.
Go play card.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Mueller, Mueller and members of the city council. I'm Matt Pruder, Associate Planner with the Planning Commission Division, and tonight I'll be presenting on the appeal of the Planning Commission approval for 2245 AV Avenue at Phillips Brooks School. Phillips Brooks School is a private elementary school in the Sharon Heights neighborhood, serving pre-kindergarten to fifth-grade students, and has been operating since 1978. Their last, latest permitting allows for a maximum of 320 students and 58 staff members. In the site map here, you can see that the school is adjacent to AV Avenue, which serves as a major connection between the school and the greater community. Launtrae Middle School is also located nearby, behind the site. The proposed project is broken into two major components. First, the applicant is requesting to increase the maximum staff cap from 58 to 68, which would be year-round. Second, the applicant is requesting to operate a summer program that would serve only existing Phillips Brooks School students, and for this request, only 120 students and 50 staff would be allowed per day. The staff count would consist of no more than 25 staff working for the summer program and 25 additional staff working onsite. It would run from June through mid-August, and operations would involve morning care from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, classes for the program from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and after-care from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Activities would include a variety of academic subjects, along with several creative and artistic classes, and periods of recess and lunch which would be, be held outside. Here is a, here's a programmatic plan depicting the site and activities proposed for the summer program, with pickup and drop-off occurring at the parking lot near AV Avenue, Avenue labeled green. The applicant plans to use most of their campus for this program. The stars in this map indicate the spaces that would be used during the program, which includes several classrooms, the amphitheater, and two outdoor recess and lunch areas. As noted in blue in this map, the playground area adjacent to AV Avenue would be accessible to the public during the program. The applicant had conducted earlier outreach with the neighborhood, including community meetings as required for their use permit, to discuss the proposed program. The applicant stated that they received no feedback from the community at these meetings relating to the proposed program. During the application process, staff received several comments. At the Planning Commission meeting of December 10th, 2018, there was, there were also a number of public comments provided, both for and against the project. The Planning Commission approved the project on that date. On January 3rd, 2019, the project was appealed on the basis of noise and traffic concerns that the appellant felt were not addressed. Staff is recommending that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission approval. The school has demonstrated a number of actions that it is undertaking, or it has completed, to help in preventing the noise, traffic, and other concerns. The conditions of approval are included as attachment A of your staff, in your staff report. First, a five-year trip cap was recently completed onsite, and the school demonstrated that it remained below the maximum number of trips. The school has also provided extensive handouts for parents and visitors to the school that explain the appropriate parking procedures. Staff, including security officers, monitor, uh, the parking and traffic in and around the school. The school is also required to adhere to the noise ordinance, and would continue to host, host quarterly community meetings, as is required in their use permit. In addition to the staff recommendation, the city council could also deny the appeal and also modify the Planning Commission approval. And as another note, per the municipal code regulations, three out of the five council members, or all three that are currently present, would have to vote in favor of appealing the project in order for the appeal to be upheld. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
My question's for the city attorney. So, we have two recused council members. Do we still need to get all three city, uh, all three city council members, or can it be two?
It re, uh, to overturn or to modify the approval of the Planning Commission requires three affirmative votes.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions from my colleagues? Nope. All right. Um...
I have a question.
Mayor Protem Taylor.
In the staff report, it states that, what does it say? That this will be open during the week, but it also said including weekends? So, is this a seven-day-a-week school, or is it five days a week?
Uh, thank you for your question. Just to clarify, the applicant has indicated that it would be a Monday-through-Friday period, but we have not explicitly stated in the actual approval. The Planning Commission did not create a specific condition that provides the information for the dates. We were just focused on the staff cap at 50 and the student cap at 120, which would be throughout that summer period.
Okay. At this time, we can go ahead and hear from the appellant. Right, right here. It's great.
Good evening. Uh, my name is, uh, Dr. Warden, Thomas Warden. You can call me Tom. I'm pretty casual. Um, I'm the appellate. Uh, I live at 2240 AV, AVY Avenue, which is the property which, one of the properties which is directly across the street on AV Avenue, uh, from the, uh, from this particular school. Uh, my re, I'm not draconian in what I want to do or not do here. Uh, what I'm trying to do is to highlight what's actually been going on at this property for 30-plus years. Um, it tends to come to light when they have, uh, use permit revisions, and that's what brings up these various issues. Uh, I know that sounds rather nebulous at this point, but as I get into this, you'll, it'll become more clear. Uh, if you could bear with me, in essence, I'm against the, uh, the approval of the Planning Commission concerning the site. Uh, my reasons are that as part of the neighborhood, I've been going to the Planning Commission meetings for 38 years now, and over the very, over the years, the, um, this particular property has requested and been granted, uh, numerous increases in student and staff population. Uh, there are concerns, of course, as there is with every school and every, posted every property that's in Menlo Park, of traffic, of course, and we, we know that. That's just the way that it is. Uh, we moved in across the school. We didn't leave the school, uh, the, the area. We didn't run away and move. I had my house up for sale, but my wife's medical condition changed, so we took it off the market, and we will be remaining, just in case that comes up tonight. Um, obviously, we've been there 38 years, and, you know, it is the way it is. The neighborhood has been granted on several occasions through the Planning Commissions, and it can be looked up, if you wish to, and through appeals that came before city councils before, most notably when, uh, Mayor Nicholas Jones sat on the council with, uh, council, councilwoman, uh, Lori Senate, that there was, uh, they usually looked at the neighborhood and says, "Well, this is the way things will be happening here. What can we do to mitigate, uh, the circumstances that you're going to be faced with?" And we were always told that, "Well, during the summers, there will be little to no activity over there, and if any would be occurring, it would have to be, uh, prior, by prior approval." Now, nothing's etched in stone, and I understand that, and that things can be brought up and discussed, and things can be modified. I'm well aware of that. Uh, but we have always taken that little to no mean was like one to two issues that would come up unforeseen, and that's fine. Now, what they're trying to do is put into, is in a summer program, and, and that's okay for them to ask for that. Uh, there's nothing wrong with that. However, this particular property is particularly noted, notable in that they do not follow, uh, many of the guidelines of the, of their conditional use per, permit, which they have in place. They also are in violation, uh, numerous times of the regulations and statutes of the city Menlo Park, particularly as regards noise and construction times. Um, so, that's pretty much where I'm starting off, is, is, it's not so much I'm against what they wanna do. I just think that, that the Planning Commission didn't really look at the, uh, of the behavior of this, of this particular property, and it's been going on for 30 years. This is nothing new that I'm bringing up tonight. Um, several times over, over, and it's, it's, it's actually starting to increase, I would say, oh, probably in the last 30 months. Uh, numerous times, the, um, the code enforcement officers have had to come out, various times, Menlo Park Police have been called out in order to shut down various activities, mostly having to do with noise, other times having to do with, um, construction when it shouldn't be done, other times to do with parking. One of the conditions of their conditional use permit is that they can't allow any parking which is associated with the school to be on the opposing side, which might be what we would call north, northwest, northeast, toward San Francisco side. How's that? Of AV Avenue and all the surrounding streets.
How about your side?
Huh?
How about your side?
How about my side? On my side, which would be toward the San Francisco side...
Right. By your house.
And, and away from LA. How's that?
Right.
Um, I believe that they tried to make a good faith effort in order to try to curtail it. They did put notifications in their bulletins to have it done. However, it's difficult to change, uh, habits and patterns of, uh, parents as they would bring their students to and from, and I understand that. However, I never felt they made much of an effort in order to do that. That aside, it came, uh, when my wife had her stroke, is when I started being at home. I'm not looking for sympathy, that's just the facts of the way it is. I don't stand in my front window and look out watching what's going on in the school. I just find that I'm usually in the den with my wife, which looks out on the school, or I'm in the kitchen, where I have now become a cook. Not bad, actually, after all this time. Um, so, again, I'm just trying to tell you why I'm aware of everything going on. It pertained, came particularly poignant about three and a half years ago when I had to, uh, take my wife to one of her medical appointments, and I couldn't park my car in front of my house to get her out. The only I can get her in and out is through the front door. It was lined with cars. Uh, where were the, where were they from? There were cars that were parked from across the street. It's a public street, you can park on there, that's fine, I understand that. However, part of the, part of the thing within the conditional use permit, can't park on that side. When I brought it to the attention, I, they were not enth, they were less than enthusiastic about having to move their cars. So, at that point, uh, I thought, okay, uh, my daughter advised me that what I should do is, uh, find out what the rules and regulations are, use the police if need be, and if for no other reason, at least by using the police, you can keep a paper trail of exactly what's going on, and then you can make your case. So, I started doing that. Now, if you're wondering why I took my daughter's advice, she's an Orange County District Attorney, and her husband is a county sheriff. So, they said this was the way to do it. Do it properly, do it appropriately, do it respectfully. So, I did. One of the things that happened is on, I'll just cite three examples. Uh, the Menlo Park Police file, which has this property, is, has several, if not dozens, of complaints against this property, where things needed to be called out. I'm not gonna bring them up. You can look that up, and the planner can look that up, because I brought it to them already. Um, they do an excellent job, there's no problem. I know that's one of these things, you're trying to mitigate a situation where there's a conflict of what should or shouldn't be done, um, in, in a neighborhood. That's fine. I understand that. My, my need was only to get a paper trail. Uh, I have one example, it's, this tended to escalate, starting with July of 2016. They hired a third-party vendor to come out and restrike the parking lot. No problem, on its surface, it's fine. The problem is they decided to come out at 6:15 in the morning on a Friday. Uh, Menlo Park construction rules, right, you can't start before 8:00 AM. Uh, I went over and asked, "Are you allowed to do this?" And they said, "Yes." I said, "Do you have a variance to be starting before 8:00? Uh, we don't know about that. Um, do you know you're not supposed to start before 8:00?" "Well, maybe." I said, "Do you have a, do you have a business license to operate in the City of Menlo Park?" They said, "Yes." I said, "Well, you had, as a, as a contingency of that business license, you had to agree to abide by the City of Menlo Parks, City of Menlo Parks rules." And everything is fine, except that their, their then-site staff manager, whose first name was Vern, I don't remember his last name, that's unimportant, uh, decided they were just gonna go ahead anyway. I thought, "Okay, fine, I'll call code enforcement." Strangely, on that Friday morning, uh, doctor, uh, doctor, sorry, Officer Eleanor Hilario happened to come in early. So, she was out there at, um, 6:45. She had a discussion with them, which seemed to escalate because she wound up finally having to fine the site manager for not complying. Uh, that's sort of when things started. Well, then, what happened is, my wife, because of her medical condition, we would have, I have a caregiver that would come in, and they parked their car in front of my house. Now, uh, all through Sharon Heights, we know that there's the street, then a swale, and then there's blacktop usually. There's few, there are very few, if any, cement sidewalks. No problem. As far as I know, everybody parks all over it anyway. Well, strangely, somebody called on the car that my caregiver had, because apparently where she was parked is not just part of the asphalt, it's actually sidewalk. So, I went out there, and there's a parking ticket on my caregiver's car. Found out that it was actually Vern, the guy across the street, who called the Menlo Park Police Department to have the car cited for parking there. I thought, "Okay, fine." So, that's what we're gonna do. Uh, we then had a meeting with Officer Hilario and myself and Scott Erickson out on the corner of, of AV, Indiana, where we went over various things about parking cars, a right-hand-turn-only sign that's supposed to be there, which is not, because one... that's supposed to be there, which is not, because one of the conditions of the use permit is that there's to be a right-hand turn-only sign coming out of the lot. It is not enforceable by law, because it's a private parking lot and it's a private driveway. However, there have been no, not one, but two Caltrans traffic studies on that site at the bequest of the then-planning commissions, which uncategorically said that you should not ever have anybody go straight or turn left out of that parking lot, due to the angle of the turn, the way it is. I mean, you can, you can look at it. It's, it's part of the annals. There's no problem there. It's also part of Caltrans annals. You can find it there. So that got put into the conditional use permit, and it was when, again, Nicholas Jellins was then mayor on the city council. He felt that it was important for the safety of children, since it's an elementary school, that it would be best not have anything going on there. Unilaterally, this particular property decided, over the last few years, to change the wording on the sign, in spite of the fact that by their use permit, it's required to say right turn only. The, the right turn only, they decided to say that it would be okay to do that dur, only during drop-off hours. Well, that's fine, but I've watched several near misses. You know, I can say that, but I've seen it. I have no choice. I'm sitting up in the window all the time. I don't know why they would want to do that, because they're taking on an enormous liability. If there's an accident occurs there, or God forbid, anybody else gets injured bodily, particularly a child, and they know they weren't supposed to do that, and they know that there's a Caltrans, two Caltrans reports saying they shouldn't, and they negligently go ahead and change the sign anyway, they're taking on a liability. If any city planning commission or any city council would allow that, that sign to persist that way, they're taking on an enormous amount of liability and responsibility, particularly from a deep-pocket cause of action. I don't understand why a publicly elected official will allow that, but that's up to you. Going further along, on November the 23rd, which was a Thursday, and yes, that's Thanksgiving morning, at, at 9:00 in the morn, now, first of all, at the July 16th issue, where the fine was issued, where the fine, where the citation which issued, was issued, which had a corresponding fine, from the then-code officer, told the site, you can't, gave, was very explicit what the construction times were based from Menlo Park regulations, also told them that you can't do this anymore. However, in the intervening 14 months, from the time that they were first told this, until the Thanksgiving morning I'm about to tell you about, they were, they were warned many times by officers having to be there to tell them, by code enforcement having to be there to tell them, and yet, on Thanksgiving morning at 9:00, four construction trucks show up, pull out their jackhammers, and start jackhammering the sidewalk.
What, what year is this?
This was 2017. I bring these up as examples. I mean, I've got dozens and dozens, but I just want to bring up just a few to give you a flavor for what's going on. We'll have a little video of that, too, by the way, when it comes up. There are still-
My only, my only concern, sir, is that there's a 10-minute time limit that I don't know if it's being kept track of, but because by, we need to keep track of it by hearing for both sides.
He is over his 10 minutes at this point.
I'm what?
You're over your 10 minutes, sir?
I'm over my 10 minutes. Okay. As far as the lights, I think it'd be easier if they would have just put some shades on the lights. This is, these are pictures, this is a picture right outside my bedroom window. Can we play, can we do the video? Let's just do that.
So that's how it is today, without shade?
That's how it was last night.
Okay. So what I'd suggest, sir, is this-
I think if we just play this, it'll, it'll kind of sum up what it is. It's, it's, it is 18 seconds long.
Okay.
And then I'll, I'll quit, and thank you for your time.
Well, don't, don't go anywhere one second, because I want to say something.
It's across the street at AV Avenue. That's Thanksgiving morning.
That's 2017, sir?
Yes, it is. And there's been other violations since then.
Okay. I want, no, wait, wait, before you leave, I want to say something to you, and I, this isn't to you. It's not to show any prejudice of what might happen in this hearing, but I always am very active in hearings like this.
Okay.
Because, so I'm going to say to you is, I want you to go ahead and go sit down, and I want you to think about the fact that tonight, you have to get three votes to overturn the Planning Commission. And so, knowing that, is there something that you would ask for other?
Yes, I have, I have a way to mitigate this whole thing.
All right. That's great. So we're going to come back to that.
My mitigation would be as follows. Let them have what, what's been approved at, at the Planning Commission meeting. But I would put that, I would put them on probation with a zero-tolerance policy. And that policy would be that there will be no violations of the statutes of the City of Menlo Park, and that they adhere to all of their conditional use permit. Yes, zero tolerance. Now, that should normally be that, we'll let you do it this year, next year, it's out if you've been zero tolerance. However, I put the caveat in that before it would be disallowed, that it would be reviewed once again with the city planning commission, and they can make that determination.
Now, I'm going to bring you back in a second, and that's, that's good. But the thing about that, I'll tell you, is that's all applying standards. And so what I want you to think about while they talk is physical things. All right? So for instance, the right-hand turn sign, the shades on the lights, parking in front of your house. I want you to go back, and instead of thinking about a standards that have to be applied by a third party, physical things that can change, that would make your life easier. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. We can go ahead and listen to the applicant.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you so much for your service to our city. And thank you to the Planning Commission and planning staff for supporting our application. Phillips Brooks School has a really excellent partnership with the city. Several Menlo Park residents are here tonight, supporting us and supporting the school. They can attest that PBS is fully committed to continue contributing in positive ways to our Menlo Park community. PBS is 41 years old. The entire time, we have rented our beautiful campus from our neighbor school district, the Los Laminas Elementary School District. We recently executed a lease extension through 2062. That makes it very clear that PBS is fully committed to Menlo Park. We are here to stay. I am in my eighth year as head of school. My team and I do everything we can to offer the best education for every single student. Over half of our students are Menlo Park residents. The LLSD superintendent has told me that she does not have the space to accommodate the children that currently attend PBS. We have another primary goal, to be the best possible neighbor. On weekends, I am delighted to see area families and children walking their dogs on our campus, enjoying the campus, and using the play spaces that PBS maintains. These are examples of the win-win environment that PBS wants to sustain. Sharing space and sharing resources for everyone's benefit. That is why the PBS summer program is very important. It is a school-related activity that extends and enhances the current program. It delivers our mission and core values. PBS is responsible for its management, and our own faculty teaches the majority of our classes. The third-party vendors we use are contractors we already know really well, from their teaching in our current after-care program. The PBS summer program addresses an important market need to support families who need child supervision in the summer. We are excited to welcome not only PBS students this summer, but also non-PBS students from outside our own community, as a community outreach initiative to Menlo Park. We have worked very hard to have a below-market price structure. Our research has shown that there are not enough summer programs for K-5 students in our area. I think that PBS is offering an important solution for Menlo Park. The PBS summer program fully complies with our current CUP requirements. That is also true of the modest staff increase, which is needed to deliver the quality programs to the very same number of PBS students. We have been thoughtful and careful in planning and design to be totally non-impactful. Here are some examples. The PBS play spaces, play spaces available to neighbors currently during the summer will remain available during our summer program, thus non-impactful. We have structured staffing, drop-off, and program locations to be non-impactful. There were no complaints, zero complaints during last summer's pilot summer program, non-impactful. There is no request for building alterations to support our summer program. There is no density increase, rather, a summer program that will not be more than only 37% of our student cap. PBS has also completed two major and rigorous studies resulting from December's Planning Commission approval. In your packet is the city-approved plan to modify parking lot signage and markings, plus a rigorous parking lot lighting survey demonstrating our full compliance. It is very important to highlight that PBS has been and is in full compliance with our conditional use permit. City officials have confirmed in writing that PBS has not been cited for any violations related to noise, traffic, parking, or anything else. Claims to the contrary are not accurate. In fact, PBS-related traffic has decreased based on the city's own measurements. We are constantly working at PBS on ways to improve. For example, adding more no-parking signs for clarity, no PBS parking even on streets not required by our CUP, increasing multiple communication strategies with parents and campus visitors, written instructions for vendors, staff oversight of carpool. We added a security officer to ensure safety, security, and smooth traffic flow. We actually have a popular program called Walking Wednesday, so that PBS children can walk and bike to school during good weather. We had 75 students walking to school one Wednesday last fall. We have also fostered a relationship with Saint Dennis Church right across the street, so that PBS families can use its parking lot, rather than any city street, and vice versa. The church can use our parking lot. I think that this Saint Dennis example is the kind of creative cooperation that PBS is committed to, and that could be very beneficial to our city and our neighborhoods. As part of our regular neighborhood engagement, and in addition to our quarterly neighbor meetings, I have personally met with and called neighbors whose letters are in your packet. They have said that they recognize our constant efforts to improve. They appreciate the many and varied ways that we communicate with families about parking and traffic. They like that we are partners, partners in our work to improve traffic and area parking. They told me that they feel good about their engagement with PBS and our response to their concerns. In fact, one neighbor told me last week on the phone that she was sorry for being a bit harsh in the letter that's in your packet. I gave her my cellphone number, and she and I agreed that moving forward, when she has questions or concerns, she will call me, and we will engage directly as neighbors. I am very disappointed that the appellant has refused to engage with me or talk with me. He has not attended neighbor meetings since last May. Before the New Year holidays, I texted and emailed him to ask him to talk. He did not reply. I even reached out to Menlo Park Police Officer Eleanor Hilario, who contacted the appellant and offered to join a discussion with us, just as she has done on previous occasions with the appellant and me. It is heartbreaking, heartbreaking to me, that my efforts to engage with the appellant have failed. Mr. Mayor, city council members, my team and PBS and I always, always will have a productive, effective, creative, and respectful dialogue with our neighbors and with our city. All of this in service of being a positive member of the Menlo Park community, a really good neighbor, and an important part of Menlo Park's educational ecosystem. With all that said, I hope you will agree that the decision of the Planning Commission is well-founded, and that you will agree with the planning staff's recommendation to denial, deny the appeal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, do we have public comment on this item? Only one? Okay, so public comment right now is Riza Cragg.
Hello, my name is Risa Cragg.
Risa Cragg, my apologies.
No problem. I want to thank you all very, very much for being here and for volunteering your time and keeping it open forum and making Menlo Park a really wonderful place to live.
Thank you.
Our family has lived kind of kitty-corner from Phillips Brooks. We've had a home there for 52 years. And of course, we've seen a lot of changes. It was even before Sharon Heights was built. So one of the biggest changes has been, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, but if you want to put that, I can hear you, but so the public can hear you.
Probably the biggest change has been traffic. And so, the corner of AV and Alchol has become one of the, I think, the busiest corners in Menlo Park. And we have a confluence of children who are walking to school, biking to school. We have children who are being delivered to school, because they're young and they don't live in the neighborhood, like to Phillips Brooks. And we have a ton of cut-through traffic. And I started to see that when the Alameda de Las Pulgas, which probably everybody knows where Dutch Goose is, so put, put it in context, when that became two lanes instead of four lanes, it all just moved over one block to the west, which is Alchol. Formerly, Alchol, which is a one block, one-way street, was a safe street. Children walked in the middle of the street. People biked. The kids skateboarded. My son used to play there with all the friends. It was a wonderful, the lady, the old ladies that couldn't walk very fast, or were in wheelchairs, came down that street. Now, I look out my window in the morning, and as far as I can see, there are cars that are lined up, and they're all turning right. So they want to cut five minutes off their commute time to get up to 2:80. Come by some morning. I'd love to give you a cup of coffee and share that view with you. So I had a wonderful conversation with Scott this morning, and he has agreed to try to work with you and also the county. I realize that's an intersection of the county, and to try to minimize that cut-through traffic. I mean, their, their traffic is miniscule compared to what we're dealing with. But when I get a notice that there's going to be any more traffic, at some point, you just go, I can't handle any more traffic. It's just, there's, there's a cutoff. The, the other problem that I experienced is when, and I have supported this school all along with anything they wanted, including the sport court. And my understanding that that covered sport court was to allow young children to go out and have physical education on rainy days. So what it has turned out to be is a magnet for teenage drinking, parties, and a constant basketball game, which can be very boisterous. I love basketball, but every afternoon, every weekend, it's very loud. There's squaring, there's music. And we have to find some way to either fence that in or minimize this magnet. I, I love it that people are playing basketball, but it's very loud, and it's right there. So as I repeated, I, I was very pleased that, that the headmaster would reach out. But, you know, it can't happen unless you reach out to him. You, the city, and the county have to work together to save this neighborhood. There are six schools in our neighborhood. Let's call it a, a school zone.
So, Ms. Cragg, I'll follow up with you, because actually, we have had Supervisor Horstley out to talk about neighborhood concerns around traffic in that area. We recently had a meeting with him at Ludikens about a month ago.
Okay.
And Alchol itself is in the Safe Roots to School Plan going before the city right now. So we have multiple stickers on Alchol who's concerned about the safety on that street. So I'll be happy to, to follow up with you afterwards.
Thank you very much.
I live a very short way away. I live at AV, I mean, I'm sorry, I live at Santa Cruz, at the, and they're in the triangle.
Okay.
So happy to talk with you about it. And I, I'm one of those people who takes my kids to school near your house in the mornings. So happy to talk to you about it.
So I've made several suggestions, like no right turn from Alchol to AV. Let's call it a kid's zone. Let's, let's, I mean- call it a kid's zone, let's, let's, I mean, I'm not a traffic expert, but I, I can tell you, there needs to be something done.
Thank you.
And there's been accidents, I was broadsided in my car.
Yeah.
There was a little boy, little boy who's this big, walking across the street in the crosswalk, who was either hit or touched, it's just...
I hear Alchell, Alchell's a mess. I understand it.
AV and Alchell, okay.
Yep, got you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's go ahead and bring it back up here for questions, are there any questions of staff? Do either of you have any questions for staff? No?
No.
Okay, so, I actually have some questions for the appellant, actually, for the applicant. Was that jackhammering, did that really happen on Thanksgiving?
Yes, and it was a big mistake, and I had a long and rigorous conversation with that vendor. He apologized to me, and I passed that apology along to the appellant. We, based on that experience, one of the issues was that, you know, vendors work in many different municipalities in the area, and he shared that some municipalities actually allow work at different times than Menlo Park's restrictions. And so, what we've done since is we've created a required signed form with the City of Menlo Park Noise Ordinance that every vendor and consultant at the school that works with us must sign and read and attribute to so that we will never allow that mistake to happen again.
Okay, that's good. I mean, very candidly, so, in listening to this, I've been, haven't been on council for seven years, this feels like a neighbor dispute. Like, I mean, a lot of what was discussed had to do with, doesn't have to do with the program, really doesn't have to do with the summer program, it has to do with about a dispute between neighbors and frankly, passionate feelings about that, and God knows, we've seen a lot of that at City Council over the years. If you want to come up, because I, I actually, it's helpful to talk, it's helpful to talk to you both, sir, would you, so...
Could I sit here?
Yeah, if you both, because I just, it'd be, I'd love to sit down and just, like, iron out some things. So, shades on the lights, is that going to make you happy?
You saw the picture.
So, is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Would that, is that doable?
That's not a major, that's, yeah, fine.
That's not a major thing?
Yes, how's that?
All right, yeah.
I actually wonder if staff can, the property is downhill from, if I'm correct, so, I'm wondering how much shades on the, what can be done to the lights, I'm not sure shades are the answer.
I could interject, it worked out very good at Gare Oaks, swimming tennis club.
So...
All they did, you take, you take a bit of sheet metal, that's probably six to seven inches long, you just bolt it onto that and that's it.
Right. So, what I want to...
It would be infinitely less expensive than the study, than the Nassau-style study they went through.
But, my, my point is, look, right now, what I want to try to do is I want to try to figure out some things between neighbors that helps to repair this relationship to the extent that we can, because the relationship's going to be ongoing.
So, pass the Mueller, yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's where we are, okay? So, shades on the lights.
You're speaking to Father Scott.
I appreciate that. A right turn, the right turn lane sign was, that should be in there, that should be on the property, so it's, it's in there, yes?
Right turn only.
Right turn only. De'ant, Ms. Chow?
So, yes, that is currently a condition, and it was modified at the Planning Commission meeting to be more specific, so they are looking to do a new right turn sign-only lane, but it's only during carpool hour. So, as Mr. Warden mentioned, they can make a left turn outside of carpool hours, the restriction is limited.
And that is problematic to you, sir?
It should be problematic to anybody in this room based on the Caltrans studies that says it's threatening to do that. That's not my call.
Well, but I want to, so, I'm going to ask the applicant.
Am I going to, am I going to lose my mind if I see somebody turn left there? Of course not, come on. Get real.
Okay, but I'm trying to drill down on what's real.
I'm drilling down on the fact that it was required to be a right turn only, and it was not. That's all, I brought that up as an example.
Okay. We don't, we don't have a history on that.
So, this condition is not new, I don't, I don't have the exact Caltrans studies that are being referenced, but the limitation is not, it's a historic condition, so it's, it's something that I think past...
Let's go ahead and do the research on that, since it's not something that you're saying is a deal-breaker for you, but I want to go back and look at the city.
It's not.
It's not?
It's not a deal-breaker.
And it's, well, if it's not a deal-breaker, I don't want to, I want to focus on the things that matter. The one thing...
Trying to help you out here.
No, and I appreciate that, because what I want, when I leave here, I want to, like, I, I think, I honestly think that we can get to a place where people are going to be happy, but I don't want to just leave and then have a relationship that needs repair.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I would like to comply with the use permit that we have had for many years. We have done the rigorous work with the Transportation Department to do the restriping and the re-signage. I would like to comply with that, that's the historical record that's in our use permit. I also believe that, that rigorous lighting study that's in your packet on page twenty-five, it shows that we're in compliance, but there are recommendations that we can address, we are prepared to address those recommendations. We were asked by city staff to wait until this hearing before we would move forward.
Does that mean you're okay with the shades?
Yes.
Great.
But, so, but here's, so here's a suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If the chief concern for the appellant is parking on his street, perhaps signs from the city could require no parking on that street.
Well, I was going to... I was going to get to that next, because what I'm...
Because that might solve the problem.
Well, my, my big issue, frankly, sir, and I'm very sorry to hear about what you're...
I'm not.
I, I know, but still, I'm telling you, I am, and so, what I'm interested to know is if there's an ADA parking space that the city could put in front of your home that would make it that no one could park there who wasn't ADA-compliant, would that be something that you would want?
I'm not the kind of person who would...
I know you're not, I know you're not asking for it.
I'm not the kind of person who would want to request that or even go out of my way to get that.
But I'm the, but we're the type of coun...
It's above the street.
But we're the type of council who would want to put it there for you.
I'm a law and order kind of guy, okay?
So am I.
It's above the street, you know?
But ADA-compliant space across from a school, and especially when there's a house with someone who might need it, is not something that's against law and order, sir.
I'd probably say, I'd say, sure, but with the condition of, since I don't know what an ADA-compliant...
It's a blue stripe, it's a blue stripe.
Yeah, my wife's going to love that. Hi, crippled person lives here, sorry, you know, it doesn't feel right.
Okay, if you don't want it, that's fine.
I gotta sneak in my wife, I gotta sneak in my wife.
I understand, I understand.
Myself, I don't care.
What if the sign just said, "No PBS parking"?
Those are the signs they have been putting up. Quite frankly, the, the school has done, I think, a great job. I've always told you when you do a good job, I let you know when you're not, but they do a great job. I think they probably do a better job than most of the schools that are, that are around that have parking problems, they go out of their way to do it. However, they have had to be encouraged by somebody with a badge, because prior to that... It didn't happen.
I don't think that's...
Well, guys, I don't want to get into this, like...
And, Mr. Mayor, so, I, this is why I closed my statement by saying, I have had a very good relationship with Tom.
Right, and one of your strengths may have decided to...
And, and...
What?
I've had a good relationship with you, and I would like to work those out neighbor-to-neighbor, is what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so, I think, I think I can let you both sit down, because I think we've gotten to where, I think, I, I don't think, parking sign's going to fix, actually, because they're putting in parking signs, it sounds like, go ahead, Councilmember Nash?
I'm sorry, no.
No, so, the light shades is something that they said they want to do, so let's go ahead and put that in. The no-turn, the right turn lane, what, the sign that's supposed to be there, let's go in there, but let's review whether or not the initial permit indicated that it was supposed to be at all times, because if we're out of compliance with that and there is an accident, the city will be liable for that. So, let's go back and take a look and see what, what was actually done at that time. Yeah, and so, is there any reason, are you planning on having programs on the weekend? Can we exclude weekends?
We do not. I think that was a reference to the fact that because we rent from a public school, we are an open campus.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And, and so, that's the reference that you're referring to.
But could we put in the use permit that we would be, there would be no, there would be no school programs on the weekends?
Our use permit does provide for occasional weekend activities.
Not for the summertime.
But not for regular school and not for summer school.
So, for summer school, no weekends?
That's fine.
Okay. That work for you? Great, okay. I think, I think that's as close as we're going to get this evening to go ahead and put in there. So, you're good? Everyone all right? I got a thumbs up from the appellant. Is the applicant good? Great, then we're done.
So, with American, I just asked to clarify a question.
Yes.
So, for the light shades, is it, I believe that picture was the photograph from the parking lot, so we're looking at light shades for the parking lot and not the perimeter of, not on other lamps.
Since we did this rigorous study, could we follow that recommendation for the shading that they've recommended from the lighting study? It's in the report.
Does that work with you?
We did the report, it's recommendation number one, we could add shading, page twenty-five of our...
Yeah, I mean, that works for, that...
Staff would need to look at that.
That's great.
We will work with the proper staff to get it correct.
I appreciate it, and the appellant's saying it's great. See, at the end of the day, I want everyone to walk out and feel the winner, and it sounds like everyone's walking out of this room feeling the winner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
And just a second, clarifying, clarifying question for staff, so, we just want to be clear, if the summer program is intended for existing students, or I heard this evening that it was also, there was potential for some additionals students.
Yes, for, we want community students, we suspect that the majority will be PBS students, but we want to have an outreach to the community.
Great, wonderful.
So, just want to have that clear, because that is not what's stated here in the report, so just want to make sure that it's, it's open to existing and community kids.
I'm sorry for the misunderstanding, yes.
But it'll be no more than one hundred and twenty students.
That's correct.
Okay. Wonderful. So, we need a motion to, we need a motion to turn down the appeal, but subject to the conditions, or is that correct?
That is, sorry, it would be to deny the appeal, approve, uphold the action of the Planning Commission subject to the modifications that were outlined previously by the council.
Great, that's the motion. Do I have, do I have someone to make the, the motion? Sure. Right, they're not going to. Okay, can you make the motion? Just say, "I move," to what Bill said.
I move.
All right, you have a second? It's the language you've provided, Bill. All right, so, we'll go ahead and vote.
The motion passes three to two with Combs and Carlton recused.
All right, I just want to thank you both. Yeah, so, go forth, do good, wonderful. Thanks. All right, we're going to go ahead and call the next item. We're going to call, call the next item now. Next item this evening is the regular business item, J1, "Review overall effectiveness of existing red light photo enforcement program and authorize the city manager to execute a five-year agreement not to exceed $234 annually with Redflex Traffic Systems, Inc. to continue the red light photo enforcement program." We have a staff report this evening by Commander William Dixon, who will present the report, accompanied by Chief Bertini. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council members. I'm here obviously to talk to you tonight about the red light photo enforcement program currently in place in the city of Menlo Park. I'm going to provide for you several data points from which for you to review, and then end with the recommendation that we continue with a five-year agreement with the current proposal. As for some background on our red light photo enforcement program within the city, for over ten years, we've partnered with Redflex Traffic Systems, and they've been the sole provider of red light photo enforcement within the city of Menlo Park. Our first contract was signed with Redflex on December 5th in 2006. You'll see that there are three specific locations listed, those are actually four approaches. When I say four approaches, there is a northbound and southbound for Ravenswood and El Camino, those are two approaches, and then the El Camino and Glenwood would be run approach, and Bayfront Expressway and Willer Road is another approach, so three intersections, four approaches. The second contract was signed with Redflex on December 5th, 2011, and in that contract, we negotiated terms to add an additional approach at Bayfront and Choco Street. Unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond the city's control, that site did not go operational until January 13th of 2017. Our current contract with Redflex expires this month, at the end of this month. The terms of the current contract per approach, you'll see that the four approaches have a cost of, a monthly cost of $4,950, with the last or fifth approach of Bayfront Expressway and Choco Street, which became operational in 2017, costing the city $6,200 a month for a total of $26,000 per month. Information regarding citations and violator statistics generated from the five approaches, ninety-five percent of the violators are single-event offenders. Since August 2013, over 1,000 drivers have been issued red light violations for multiple offenses. Thirty-two drivers have been issued four or more violations. Eighty-seven percent of the citations issued are issued to drivers operating vehicles registered outside the city of Menlo Park. That means they're not Menlo Park residents. There have been questions brought up about left turn, right turn, and straight violations. Here's some data for you with regard to what those account for. The only intersections or approaches that we enforce left turn and right turn violations are El Camino Real and Ravenswood, both northbound and southbound, and El Camino and Glenwood Avenue northbound. You'll note in 2015, the right turn was added for northbound El Camino Real and Ravenswood that accounts for an increase in violations. Another point of interest or point to note is the threshold speed or trigger speed for a violation is 12 miles per hour, which means you have to be traveling at a speed of greater than 12 miles an hour for there to be an actual violation. I know people have made mention that they were traveling four miles an hour, making a right turn and didn't stop, and it activated the system, the threshold speed is 12 miles per hour. Here's some collision data for the intersections that have red light photo enforcement. You'll note on the far-right column, there are several numbers within parentheses, those indicate the total number of collisions reported within the city during that calendar year, and I added that just to give you an idea of how, if traffic collisions were arising or if they were dropping during that specific period of time. And then also, if you look, Choco and Bayfront, there's an indication by the double asterisk that that installation became operational in January of 2017. With regard to the violation fine distribution, or how much the, the city of Menlo Park actually obtains from the $490 fine, the city of Menlo Park gets $155.63 per violation. The other $334 and change goes to different penalty assessment funds set by the county and the state. That's also assuming that the total fine was paid. Oftentimes, when an offender goes to court to contest a ticket, the fine can be reduced or it could be sent for community service or a number of different things, that's simply assuming that the full $490 assessment was paid. With regard to revenue and expenditures, since the inception of the red light photo enforcement program in 2011, annual revenue has exceeded expenditures. Our current one FTE staffing costs are approximately $125,000 total comp annually. You'll see there, based upon the last five fiscal years, where we are, last year, we generated $24,000 in net revenue. So, we conducted an RFP, which is clear, obviously, in the staff report. I specifically sent invitations for proposals to five different entities asking for their, for them to submit a proposal. Two of those I spoke with specifically said that they believed the incumbent system had the upper hand because of the equipment costs associated with removing one entity's equipment and adding their own, so they declined to participate and add a proposal. So, we did obtain one proposal, and that was from Redflex Traffic Systems. Here's the content of their current proposal. It proposes a reduction in the monthly approach fees from, for four of them, from $4,950 to $3,900, and the $6,200 fee that we currently pay monthly for Bayfront Expressway and Choco Street to $3,900 as well. to thirty-nine hundred dollars as well. Uh, they've made some technology, uh, improvements to the cameras, uh, and internal back office equipment. Uh, we've also, uh, committed to continue with our own project team and with, uh, Redflex Client Services Manager, Mark Carroll, who's also here tonight, if you have any questions specifically related to Once again, we, here, I provided you with some information or data sets regarding the efficacy of the program itself, and that we're asking you to, uh, authorize the city manager to execute a five-year agreement not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars between the city of Menlo Park and Redflex Traffic Systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, public comment on this item? Okay. Before I take public comment, does anyone have any questions they want to ask now?
I have the president in question.
Oh, no, I know, I'm talking about my colleagues. Does anyone have any questions they want to ask before I take public comment? No. Okay, our first speaker this evening is Maya Seawell. Good evening, Ms. Seawell.
Good evening. Thank you, council, for all your great work, and I want to acknowledge my partner, John Prayer, who's here and is also a member of the Menlo Park Police Chiefs' Advisory Committee. We've been, um, in this committee for about four years, I believe, and, uh, first of all, I have to really, um, as you all are aware, commend our Menlo Park Police Department for the outstanding job they do, really outstanding, and I would never have been aware of it without serving on the committee. Um, I think, uh, the red light camera is a, continuation is a great idea, mainly it's just because they don't have enough police force to man every intersection, and anything that promotes the safety and is on camera, so it's provable, is a great idea. So, I just wanted to say that, and thank you all again for considering, and John's with me, right, John? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Masoodi Tronson.
Thank you, council. Um, I will read it to, to make it more effective. Uh, this is for Redflex contract, the, for the automated capture of the red light cameras. In October two thousand and eighteen, council members expressed concerns over the corruption history of this company. Uh, at the same meeting, there was also a request by council to have a report on the effectiveness of having red light cameras. Others, including some other people who had run for council, have expressed concern over violation of civil liberties. The impact of the red light cameras on accident prevention, this question was specifically asked by council, yet it remains unanswered. We have seen the collision numbers, but the question asked was, how do these cameras reduce collision? We haven't seen that in the report. Appendix A, the actual proposal, which is referencing the contract, is missing. Missing appendices are not uncommon in certain contracts, uh, that are posted online, by the way. In addition to the two hundred and thirty-four thousand cost of the contract, it is unclear how four hundred and thirty-seven thousand of the collected fines are allocated to the cost of running the program. The document states that equipment service and maintenance along with police department staffing makes up the bulk of the program expenditures, and it also says the current staffing costs are approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. It is unclear what is the other three hundred thousand dollars are spent on, uh, you know, the fines that are gathered. This is an example of broad categorization of costs without details. It's important to note that I'm not advocating for the city approving such programs, or that if it's implemented, making a profit off of them, but that if it is done, it is important to know how the proceeds are spent. That's not in the, uh, report. Given that the requests were made at a council meeting in October two thousand and eighteen, why was the request for quote only posted on March first of this year, and initially for only two weeks? During that period only, the incumbent responded. The time period to respond was extended by another two weeks, with no other responses, by the way. Two of the responders indicated that two weeks was not sufficient time to complete a comprehensive proposal. Perhaps because of the initial short period to respond, only the incumbent vendor responded, we never know. Although these time periods may be legal, in legal compliance with posting requirements and notice requirements, best practices should be followed to allow more time for, uh, when we post, uh, you know, these requests for, for quotes. There's no reason to always adhere to bare minimal. And as a general comment regarding contractors like Redflex or IDAX Data Solutions, which is another traffic recording contract that we, that we have, that we consider confirmation from them as to, they are sharing such data directly or indirectly with certain agencies such as ICE, as certain companies like Visionous Solutions have been doing, uh, across the state.
Thank you, Ms. Tronson. Our next speaker this evening is Lynn Bramlett.
No, I will leave it right now.
Oh, okay.
Do you need my time? No, no, that was it.
Okay. So, um, we already have a policy regarding sharing of information, correct, Chief?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I remember, we ironed that out, uh, I think, six years ago, so, um, so, that's not happening.
This is not, I'm sorry, this is not about the police department, I'm sharing it. There are two clear examples of these companies, I must say, these are part of a company that's had, but this is not about the police department.
But my memory of it is that we had an addendum to the, to the, uh, to the contract with Redflex that prohibited it, and we went over it at that time. Is that correct, Chief Bertini?
That's correct.
Yeah, I, we covered, I remember bringing this issue up, Soodi, at that time, saying that they weren't allowed to do it, and we, we worked it out. The police department was supportive of that, and we got that into the contract. Um, but I appreciate the concern. Uh, Councilmember Nash?
Is that in the new contract? So that they cannot prohibit, they cannot share data?
Yeah, the, the contract is, is very similar, except for the numbers that have been changed, yes.
Uh, any other questions? So, we're opening it up to questions now from council members. Gosh, the lights are coming on furiously. Councilmember Carlton?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a cold tonight. Um, yeah, this is one of these things, um, that I, to be honest, I, I was kind of hoping I was wrong about. Um, I voted against this when we put it on, what was it, two thousand and thirteen? Whenever this, whenever we first did this, um, because a lot of information was given to us and presented, saying that these were going to increase accidents, and, um, as it came before us again, I, to be honest, was hoping they were going to make things better. And, uh, I, because I, I vehemently want to make our roads safer, and, um, we don't have the statistics here, but the national information that I see, uh, shows that pretty much generally, they do increase the number of accidents. They make the, the T-bone accidents where people die fewer, but they make the rear-end accidents, uh, more common. And I'm, I'm sad to see that in two thousand and thirteen, there were twenty-three accidents, and there are twenty-nine accidents in two thousand and eighteen. And we, we passed these things because we said this was going to teach people. It was gonna teach them to not run the lights. It was gonna teach them to not have accidents and drive more safely, and I'm, I'm frustrated that that's not what I'm seeing. Um, the number of traffic accidents in, in the intersections where we have the traffic cameras is going up. On top of this, the, the citation percentages remain the same at, what is it, two percent, point zero two percent? And I'm, I'm sad that these do not seem to have an impact on, on people's behavior, um, which makes me not be in love with the traffic cameras being there at all. Um, so, I'll start off with that.
So, I'm gonna have Councilmember Nash, then I'd like you to respond.
No, go ahead.
But Chief Bertini, did you want to respond?
Certainly. Uh, it's really difficult in this situation to, to prove a negative. We don't know how many accidents didn't happen because of the cameras. Uh, we have, uh, generally, one of the, one of the challenges I had, and I think I've, I've spoken to previous councils about this when I first came here in two thousand and eleven, is the traffic collision rates for this city. Um, unfortunately, we were in the top ten worst of ninety-eight similar-sized cities in all categories of accidents, and that continues to be the case today, and that's why one of my, uh, biggest, uh, focuses is on traffic. Um, and that's why we, we're getting a robust, uh, traffic unit with motorcycle officers. Um, and one of the things I've said in the past, you know, to deal with traffic issues are the three E's, education, enforcement, and, uh, engineering. Now, obviously, we don't do the engineering part, that's transportation, but we could do the other two, and that's education and enforcement. What the red light cameras, in my mind, do is that they hold people accountable, especially those people who don't even live in our city. And when you have almost ninety percent of these folks who are driving through, transiting through our cities, running red lights, and if we didn't have these cameras, they would not be held accountable. Um, and who knows what the, what the, what the, the change would be if we got rid of those cameras. Um, we don't have the officers available to post at every intersection twenty-four hours a day, so, there's no way we could do that kind of enforcement. So, from my, uh, perspective, it really is the two, other two E's, education and enforcement.
Okay. Councilmember Nash?
So, I was looking, um, this morning through the various, um, getting more information online, and came across, um, both the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, um, says that this red light cameras actually do reduce the red light crash deaths, and in addition to that, um, the AAA Advocates for Highway and Auto Safety and the National Safety Council all are saying that they actually are reducing, that it's increasing traffic safety. So, I had also read all these statistics about how that it was not helping, and when I looked further into the data, um, and who is publishing the data, um, I believe these other organizations much more than I do the data that had been circulating.
And if I, if I may, and to the mayor's point, uh, you're absolutely correct. It is, what is reducing is the, the very, very dramatic and horrible T-bone accidents, and I can tell you, just anecdotally, in thirty-two years of doing this job, those have been the worst accidents I've ever seen. Um, you know, there may be a slight increase in, in rear ends because people are slamming on their brakes because of the red light, actually turning red and them stopping, but it's those T-bone accidents where the real, the death and, and the, and the serious injury occur that are being reduced.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Of course.
Um, it says here, I mean, I've, I've read both sides of the statistics, and sadly, the statistics in front of us show that these are, where we, in the intersections where we've installed these cameras, we have more accidents, we have more collisions. Um, do you have a breakdown on how many of these collisions in two thousand and three, what the percentage was, were T-bones versus, uh, rear-end collisions and how those have changed? Uh, I mean, all I have in front of me is, there are more collisions. Do we, do we know exactly what the breakdown is?
For the year two thousand and three, or for, or for the years for that?
Well, thirteen to eighteen is in front of me, so that's kind of what I'm looking at.
So, I, we have that information. I specifically did not put it in the report, because then it becomes subjective upon what my opinion is or the opinion of the person there was. If, if the intent is to determine whether or not the, or if red light cameras are responsible for reducing collisions, these are the collisions that occurred in that specific intersection. Whether or not it was a person who hit an object, or a person who rear-ended somebody, or somebody who was T-boned, I didn't get into the minutia of it. I specifically reported the amount of collisions that were occurring.
Because that, that would help, because what this does is it tells me that it's increasing collisions, and I-
So, but the prop, the thing that I, that's confounding to me, that I don't know, is the traffic volume.
Exactly.
So, in two thousand and three, what was traffic volume in the intersection versus two thousand and eighteen?
The traffic volume statistics are on page one seventy-eight, and the citation percentage of zero point zero two percent has stayed the same the entire time.
But that's because we have such low numbers.
Of, of citation percentages?
No, I'm talking to, go ahead. No, 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 please, go ahead.
Go ahead. Um, essentially, when you're talking about numbers which are, um, in, but the largest number is twenty compared to thirteen, the traffic volume in the millions, you're not going to see a change, and you really have to go out many decimals before you're gonna see a change. It's because of the, we have very few traffic accidents per the millions that are going through the intersections.
So, if you look on page one seventy-eight, the traffic volume in two thousand and fourteen was sixteen million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-three, and if you look at two thousand, uh, yeah, it's gone up a lot, but if, if people, if people were-
Yeah, it's gone up by seven million.
My point is, if this is supposed to be educational and teaching people, I'd like to see more, more movement than, the citations in two thousand and fourteen were three thousand three hundred and sixty, three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five, and two thousand and sixteen was four thousand. I don't, I don't really just, I don't see a movement that's showing me that people are-
Well, do you want more citations? I think that may be a good slide.
I'd like to see less.
Well, actually, but the thing is this, guys, is that there are, so, if you look at, if you were to take sixteen million and say there's three thousand three hundred and sixty, and then add seven million to twenty-three million, and say that it's three point seven, three thousand, three point seven nine five, then you may, I mean, do the math, I, actually, you're, you're still within three, but you have added seven million. So, you're actually seeing your incidence rate drop. So, but look, and, and if you're doing that, and then on top of it, what you're saying is you're seeing this increase in volume, the question is whether or not the increase in volume is contributing to the rear end, or is it a result of the red light? I don't know the answer to that, um, that question, but I'm, where I am on this is because, you know, candidly, no offense to you all at Redflex, but I wasn't really excited about upping, given what we saw in the history, and I'm sure I'm not the first person to have said that to you all, and it's something you deal with as a company. Um, so, um, but, when I hear that my chief tell me that this is preventing T-bone collisions, which is, uh, the most life-threatening type, and then I'm looking at the stats that have been provided, now I'm caught in a position where I didn't want to do this, but I'm seeing that safety is telling me that perhaps I need to do this still. But the other thing that's weighing on my mind, very candidly, Chief, is, um, I have seen a lot of traffic, uh, in terms of stop sign running, where we don't put a camera. And so, if we're adding force, I'm, I'm hearing all over the city now, I need enforcement in neighborhoods because people are going through our neighborhoods at high speed and just ignoring stop signs, and I visually have observed this in the last two weeks, so.
Right, and, and to address that, that is my, one of my major focuses since I started as the chief. Um, you know, we actually just, uh, appointed two more motorcycle officers, so you'll be seeing four motorcycle officers in the next six months out there, doing nothing but traffic enforcement.
That's great, because I, yeah, what I'm, what we're seeing in the, in the neighborhoods at the stop signs is really not good.
Right, unfortunately, the vehicle code doesn't allow us to put cameras on stop signs.
No, I don't think the neighbors would want it in their residential neighborhood either, so. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, so, first, um, I really appreciate the, the work that, um, Commander Dixon and the chief have, have put into this. I, I know that, um, your position on this comes from a heartfelt place of, of wanting a, a safer community and wanting to see, uh, less collisions, uh, especially with regards to some of our high, uh, highest traffic intersections. Um, I have, uh, always had an issue with, with these programs, with these red light programs, and, and they, that continues. And I did see the, you know, some of the information that came across, the, um, uh, the, the email alias today, and, and there just isn't, there, there isn't even any real causal correlation in those studies, uh, between increased safety and the presence of, of the cameras. I, I mean, it just, it just wasn't, it, those studies were, were, were kind of a joke, to be, to be honest with you, and, and I don't think we should. We can extend this camera, but let's not, sort of, this, this system, and let's not delude ourselves that this is really making streets safer, um, because I, I don't think that they, they are at all, and, and I, I can't, I can't, I can't support it. Um, I can't support, um, you know, program that, a five hundred dollar ticket, this is incredibly regressive. You know, we, we talk a lot about, you, you know, equity, um, and, and just think, for, for a lot of us here, it's, it's just, well, five hundred dollars, I mean, for a lot of people, that's just like, you know, an insane amount, uh, of money for, in some cases, a, a situation where people are not quite clear what's happening, you, you know, they, um, they're, they're trying to be most of- They're trying to be most efficient in some cases in getting across the intersection, or in some cases, as we've seen with other studies that show that these, these systems actually increase accidents, people are stopping short when it may have been the safest thing for them to go through the intersection. I mean, so many dozens of cities have removed these programs because of this issue. And I'm not even getting into the issue of the incumbent inventor in the situation and some of the situations that have surrounded that company. I'm just looking at the program. And there is really no valid study that shows that this program has increased safety in Menlo Park. And as you look at it holistically, there is no valid and legitimate study that says it has really increased safety. If anything, it has caused more accidents because people became, become hyper-aware of trying to avoid the camera. So for me, my initial thinking on this, which has been the case for a while, is that I could not, you know, support extending this program. I just, I just don't see it. And I think that, you know, technology can be great. It can put eyes in places that they don't currently exist. It can increase safety, but we have to, you know, be willing to look at the, what's happening holistically, and be willing to sort of balance the situation. And this is a situation where I don't think that the technology is bringing us to a better place.
Mayor Pertham Taylor?
Thank you. I want to follow up on a couple of questions that Sudi asked regarding the impact on collision rates, and also the appendix A. I wasn't sure if there was an appendix that was supposed to be in our staff report. It was online. So, Sudi, do you mind, do you mind me asking? Can you ask your questions again? Can you come to the podium so we can hear you? Thank you.
So in the agenda for tonight, the hyperlinks, when you click on it for this proposed contract, it references appendix A, which is supposed to be the actual proposal, and it's missing. And that's not the first time, you know, I haven't gone trying to find contracts that are missing components or things online, but even for the other company that does the monitoring of the traffic, that one also, for example, was missing the actual appendix. So one is just a request to actually make such documents in total available. The other question that I had, aside from the effectiveness or lack of effectiveness of such programs, was where is that other $300,000 worth of fines going? Because only 125 of it is allocated to the full-time clerk that runs, you know, or operates the program at the police department. That was my other question.
Chief, isn't, doesn't those funds go to the county or state, a portion of them?
They're stated as expenditures.
So I think we're talking about revenue and expenditures, and there's $437,000, 125,000 are staffing costs, and the 312 are the approach fees of $26,000 per month, which comes out to about $312,000. So that comes out to the 437,000 that's referenced in the fiscal year 2017, 2018 as our total cost.
If I may, I don't understand what's an approach fee?
That's the fee that's paid to Red Flex.
But they already have a contract for 237 or 234,000. It says that's for maintenance, I'm sorry.
In our current contract, per approach, we pay a certain fee, which is equivalent to, for all five approaches, $26,000 per month.
To do what, to maintain?
To operate the red light photo enforcement software, program, cameras.
So, I'm sorry, I apologize if I'm out of order. What's a 234,000 for then? That's a separate contract price?
That would be the new amount, yes. It's a reduced amount for the current proposal. It's been reduced 25% from 312 to...
I'm sorry, chief. When I read it, it says that the cost of the contract, the contract is for 234,000. That is separate from the revenues that are collected from the fines. Of that revenue, 437,000 is going to, and that's in the report by the, that says, of that 437,000 goes primarily to maintenance and, you know, supporting the clerk, right? The clerk then is identified at 125,000. So my question was, where is the other 300,000?
Okay, were those your only questions?
Well, aside from the effectiveness.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Mueller, may I address the question regarding the appendix attachment?
Yep.
So originally, the agenda was posted with that staff report having the attachment of the agreement. However, Red Flex did reach out to us and requested it be removed. There were private emails and phone numbers for some of their clients that they had used that were not allowed to publish. So it was removed because of privacy concerns. We definitely can work on getting a redacted copy from Red Flex, but given the time of posting and this meeting, we couldn't retain that document.
Thank you. All right.
I just have...
Mayor Pertham Taylor?
Thank you. I just, one last thing, because my co-counsel has already brought up a lot of the questions that I had. As far as Red Flex, I can't see myself supporting Red Flex for the simple fact of whatever their issues are, their legal issues. It doesn't make sense for best practices for Menlo Park to continue to do business until they clean up whatever's going on on their inside. That shouldn't be a part of our problem. And it's unfortunate that we don't have anyone else to continue the program if we vote it that way. But as long as it stands the way that it is, I do not support it.
Okay, so it sounds like we have definitely three votes not to extend the contract. That's correct? All right. Certainly.
It sounds like the vote's already there. I just wanted to address Mayor Pertham's question, if I could, though. My name's T.J. I'm the Director of Account Services for Red Flex Traffic for the U.S. Business. And you mentioned our current legal issues. The issues that they're bringing up is referenced in Chicago, that was in 2013. Since that time, everything with the Department of Justice for Chicago, as well as they looked into the state of...
Could you pull, put to my question?
The issue you're bringing up is back from 2013, so over six years ago. The Department of Justice did do a full investigation. We completely complied. There were findings that our current CEO at that time was involved in something with the city of Chicago, meaning there was improprieties or improper actions. We had, at the time, we removed that person, as well as our head counsel, as well as anyone else who was involved with that contract, they were all terminated. We then worked with the Department of Justice. We completed their program, meaning that they looked at all of our business, they found no other improprieties. They then put us on a program where we had a compliance officer. That compliance officer reported directly to the board. If maybe I were to go and have lunch with the mayor tomorrow, I could not go to lunch with the mayor until I supported all documentation to the compliance officer. What is the Menlo Park policy? Can I buy him a cup of coffee? Do we have to go Dutch? Do I have to report it to anyone? Does it have to be reported to the police? And this is not just the mayor, it could be a police officer, whoever. So we went through that for a period of five years, and they found nothing in that five-year period, so they removed those restrictions. We were then restored as a qualified bidder for the city of Chicago as well. They found that we had met all their requirements and had no other issues since 2013, so we're talking about six years ago. So we don't have any current legal issues today, or anything since 2013. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
I just, I believe that there was also a conviction in Columbus, Ohio.
Columbus, Ohio was not our employee, that was actually a lobbyist.
But the DOG, okay, the DOJ document references it.
Correct, but it was not a Red Flex employee. It was a lobbyist, it was, did something improper.
All right, thank you. So that leads us to where we are now. And if we don't have three votes, I just want to be done with it and move on. So, we still have three votes against. Councilmember Taylor? Yes. Okay, one inquiry I did have just before we wrap this up is, the ticket price, does it have to be set at $500? Is that contractually obligated?
The $490 fee is set by the state. The actual fine, base fine is $100. All the other $390 are penalty assessments that are set by both the state and county.
Wow, all right.
Just for the record, Senator Hill had a bill years ago to address that, but didn't pass. So if you want more information, you can always have coffee with Senator Hill.
It's been reintroduced. It's for right turn violations, for the reduction of fees, or the base penalty for right turn violations, but it's still pending.
All right, all right. So I need, there's two ways we can do this. We can just have a motion fail, or we can vote affirmatively to end it. If no one makes a motion, then it just fails.
Well, so the...
Then the contract wouldn't be renewed.
The contract ends when?
Expires at the end of this month.
All right, so...
So if it's not, so you don't need to take any action. If you're not going to approve it, you don't need to take any action. The contract will expire, the equipment will be removed, and that'll be the end of the program. We can just leave it without a motion and move on, if that works for everyone. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you very much. So our next item on the agenda this evening is approval of a bonus for City Attorney William McClure. Item J2. I think, Bill, you probably need to excuse yourself because of a conflict. There's no staff report. Well, there is a, there's no report to be given at this time, but link is available for questions. Anyone have any question? Is there any public comment? Yes, Ms. Bramblett?
Hello again. So the report commented that Mr. McClure's institutional knowledge was a stabilizing factor during the period when we didn't have a city manager or were working toward one. That seems like a key part of the reason why he's being proposed for a bonus. I have three suggestions. One, I think it would be good if Mr. McClure put in writing his key institutional knowledge, you know, on key matters that will be lost when he retires. For example, I think he's the only one who knows about a lot of our roughly 50 public-private partnerships. I heard him mention that number, and there isn't any documentation. I mean, someone might try to piece together something, but so much is missing. And I think it should be documented. Next, I also suggest that the city consider general ways to increase transparency and documentation of all important information. I mean, anything can happen to anybody. It's very risky not to have it down. Evolving the topic a little, I also suggest that council reconsider the existing bonus program for the management level employees not represented by unions. These bonuses can go to 24 of the city's most highly-paid employees. The bonuses can be as much as 20K per year. I mean, there's a pot of money, but it could conceivably be that. My understanding is that the city manager awards the bonuses, but I've never seen details as to if formal criteria exists. And the current approach could be perpetuating the status quo instead of more strategically moving the organization forward. And I think there's an opportunity here. So I suggest, at some point, consider ways to establish a bonus program that's open to all employees. Establish criteria for the bonuses designed to move the city towards an improved organizational culture in areas where it's been identified as weak. Consider ways to more visibly recognize those getting the bonuses so they become obvious role models for others. And I would even consider broadening the nomination process by allowing residents and staff to nominate people for consideration of a bonus. So in summary, you know, I hope we get that key information down, and, you know, I think we have an opportunity to have a more egalitarian and broader program, more aimed at strategically working on our culture here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, all right, and so, thank you, Ms. Bramblett. So, no more public comment. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I also want to point out one, as much as we've talked about pension, unfunded pension liabilities this evening, that the pensionable wages of Mr. McClure will not be affected by this, by this bonus, which is a point I just wanted to put on record. So with that, I'll move.
Okay, so second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. Excellent.
The motion passes 4 to 1 with Councilmember Nash dissenting, or abstaining.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move now to informational items, K1 through K4. There are no staff presentations. Anyone have any questions? Okay, moving on, pass the informational items. City managers...
Do you have a public comment on K2?
Okay, Ms. Bramblett?
Okay, last comment. So I want to start out by saying I don't use the pool or have any affiliation with the former or current operator of the pool. I think pools are important, as are recreational facilities. So I became interested in the topic when I had neighbors and other people say they couldn't get into the pool. It was closed when they wanted to take their kids. And then when the contract was renewed, I read the comments on Town Square. And a lot of them were very thoughtful, and, you know, I think they raised issues that should be addressed. I, in fact, wrote requesting, or suggesting, you know, to staff that we have a performance audit of our aquatics program. And I think the main issues are, you know, taxpayers ultimately are paying for quite a bit of this, and, you know, it's reasonable to ask for, you know, is this, is it a fair financial arrangement? And then more importantly, is this really fair to the residents? Are we running an elite pool for some, or is this a community operation? So they've called for an audit, and I think it's fair. The staff report is not an audit. I would describe it, and it's not objective to me. It's written by someone who probably hired the person, and it seems very aimed at persuading us why we should keep this. So I, you know, I think, I think we need, I think an audit is still needed. And I did some research myself in terms of how these kind of pools are run. And I have a report that I found, and one of the comments was, it can be outsourced to a Y, which I had never thought of. I go to the Y in Redwood City, in fact, I was there today, and they really have a well-run program. I'm not trying to promote the Y by itself, but Redwood City, they're building an actual new senior center, and the Y will be co-located with it. And I don't know what their financial arrangements are. I think the Y pays them, but it's quite nice. And, you know, I'm just saying there are other options out there for us. But meanwhile, if enough people are concerned about something, and you can go, you know, through the comments and see it, I think those issues ought to be addressed. And I do, before closing, just want to say, my conclusion of our city is that we lack enough financial transparency about our arrangements, our contracts, especially sole source. I think we're really at risk for a city. So I think we need to tighten up, we probably need a separate discussion on that topic. Tighten up the financial controls here.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. Okay, any, any other questions about any of the information items? On information items?
Yes.
Okay, which information?
This one, K2.
K2. So Derek, if you could please join us. Thank you, Mr. Schwager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have two comments. One of them is the information that's on page 271 is incorrect. Willow Oaks and Billhaven are not in the Redwood City School District. The second is, does Mr. Sheppard have an outreach plan? And we've discussed this already, as far as you can't tell the pool is open.
Yeah, so one of the things, that is correct. So Councilmember Taylor, Tim Sheperd, as well as, you know, Menlos Women's Sport, they have done a tremendous amount of outreach to the community in general. But one of the things that we are, that I'm going to plan to be working with him is what other measures we can use to promote. So currently, right now, he does... So currently, right now, he does advertise very similarly as all of our other Parks and Rec programs, so he is in our activity guide, which is our number-one publication for outreach and promotions and so forth. He also has a foundation, which also supports many of the programs that happen, that occur at Bell Haven. So it is a scholarship program that allows, helps to increase access to the pool for such things like swim lessons and water polo and so forth. But, but it's definitely a topic, I do meet regularly with Tim Sheppard, with Tim Sheppard, and it would certainly be a subject that, for discussion at a future meeting.
My last question is, just thinking about what Ms. Bramblett just stated around the audit. So Mr. Sheppard clearly did his own audit.
Well, part of the, part of the contract requires an annual report, which in that annual report, it specifies in the contract the specific things that we require him to respond to. The, in terms of, and of course, the city is also very much involved. Part of what we have to do as a director here, as well as with Community Services, that we have to manage that contract very closely. So we do take a look at performance and, and how well he's performing and so forth, but that's, that's typically how we would manage a contract like that.
Thank you.
I have a question. Sure, I was on the Parks and Rec Commission when we did this, and that was the first time in my life I was at a Parks and Rec meeting that lasted till I think nearly 1:00 a.m., because it was contentious. And when it opened up, we only had two companies that applied, that wanted to run the pool, because most cities run pools at a huge loss. And it was pretty contentious, but it was given to Tim, and we insisted that he opened the Bell Haven pool, and eventually he's worked with us, and I'm so happy that it's now open more hours throughout the year. He's expanded out what he's doing. And I understand that we're, we're no longer, we were actually making a profit as a city from Tim Sheppard, and with the increased use, we now had the increased need to redo the pools, because a lot of the mechanisms supporting the pool needed to be replaced. Saying that, we always want to make sure, so I, I hear that he's doing a good job, but we always want to make sure that he continues to do a good job. Now, I remember on Parks and Rec, we do, as a city, a pretty reasonably in-depth survey on gymnastics, on, on basketball, and all the different things that we offer. Do we not do the same thing with the pool?
So we, we do, we do survey programs. One of the things that we are currently looking at as part of the annual report is looking at doing an independent survey with our customer base that's, that uses the pool. We've, you know, we have gotten tremendous feedback about, from the customer evaluations and so forth, that we have heard. You know, so there hasn't been any reason to believe that the product that's been produced isn't of great quality. But given some recent changes that are happening in terms of demand at the pool, and again, it is something that we're considering.
So I know that the problem with the pool has always been, there's just more demand than anybody could schedule. Because some people want to swim laps, some people want to have swim classes for their kids, some people have the elderly, they've got everything imaginable happening in the pools. And it's always been just a crunch to get everybody to, to fit in what we have available. I assume that's still the case. Tell me, staff is working with him to ensure that that's being optimized?
Yeah, so right now, and one of the things that you, was in the report, if you had an opportunity to take a look at the most recent report, one of the three challenges that have been, that was mentioned frankly, is just pool time. It's just, there's not enough water to do all the programs that, that need, that are being demanded. And so that continues to, to, to be done. Programs have to be evaluated as to whether or not trying to maximize the water, maximize the space for those programs that have the, the greatest demand. So that continues to be one of the challenges that we have. Looking at, you know, both of the pools, one of the things that we are also looking at is evaluating the current hours that we have at the pool. It's a 24/7 operation, particularly, when I say 24/7, I shouldn't say that, but it's open pretty much 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday at Burgess Pool. We have since expanded so that the pool at Bell Haven is open year-round. However, we are going to be taking a close look at the hours that, that is being operated there. I know that there is some interest from the community about having that pool open when the community is interested in having it, and although it's gone through, it's evolved over time based on what demand the operator has determined. But we'll take a close look at those hours and make sure that they're also being offered at the time that the community wants it.
Thank you, I, I asked some of those questions to address some of the concerns of the speaker, to make sure that that was, that was addressed.
Sure.
And also, just, it's good governance.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, we're great, thank you. Any more questions, anyone? I just want to say, Mayor Phil Sith, thanks a lot for trying to take Tim Sheppard away from us. So, so we'll follow up. I, I understand the concerns around going to bid. In this circumstance, given the current climate around pool operators, it actually is difficult to find pool operators, and it was compounded by the fact that Tim has done a good job at the pool, so much so that there are actually council members who swim at the pool from Palo Alto, who liked it so much that they, they went and had him start working at the pools in Palo Alto. So it started to make it actually a crunch to, for us to make sure we continue operation. So that's a little insight, if you guys ever wonder where Palo Alto City Council members swim, they swim at our pool. Anyway, thank you. Any other, any other questions tonight? Council, city manager report?
I would just reiterate that next week, we do have a city council meeting next week, and it will be at, at the Bell Haven Senior Center, and it will be starting at 5:00 o'clock. We'll have a public comment period from 5 to 6.
That's not me, okay.
So everyone's welcome, everyone come.
Okay, any council member reports? No, okay, great, meeting adjourned.